Call the budget session if you order tonight. The one for City Council, Monday, Wednesday, December 4th, 2019, in the City Council chambers. Please rise for the invitation by Councilman Joel Henderson, who made standing for flag.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the blessings that you give to us, for the great privilege that it is to live here in this city. Lord, we thank you for all the aspects, the benefits that we enjoy here, specifically tonight, as we're considering this budget, we'll be looking at the Public Safety Departments, and we thank you for our Police Department, for our Fire Department, for the codes, officers, and how they keep us safe in many different ways, and they risk their lives in many ways, and we thank you for each of them, we thank you for the great privilege to have these departments. We pray that you would help us to have wisdom as we consider how to manage the resources, specifically the taxpayers' money, and that we would be mindful that these resources are not ours to do with what we want, but they belong to the taxpayers, and then doubly we recognize they belong to you as well. And so, we are held to a high standard of using these resources in a way that would benefit these citizens and residents here. So, Lord, give us wisdom tonight as we consider these weighty matters, give us unity, clarity of thought, and good understanding, and this we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'm ready. I apologize, I didn't have my mic on earlier, and I called the meeting to order. Thank you, Councilman Henderson. We're going to do our second budget work session tonight, where we'll complete the rest of the departments in City Hall, in all their financials and other questions related to that. Just by way of explanation, we can make changes at any time, traditionally, or at least since I've been on council, we've had the two budget sessions, the work sessions, and then we've come, tomorrow night, we have our regular City Council meeting, where we'll approve the first reading of the final budget, and that's when we'll make changes, either additions, subtractions, and things like that, after we've compiled the information that we've received over these two budget sessions. And again, we have our council people-elect sitting in. It's a good process to have them be able to ask questions, and to interact, and to see the budget and how it all works, and I'd say they acquitted themselves quite well so far, and I expect they'll do the same tonight. So, without further ado, let's move on to our 2020 budget review, and up first is the Department of Public Safety, the Office of the Director, which is on page 40. Welcome, Chief Hagan.
Good evening, President Allison, Vice President Mealy, members of council, Mayor Campana, City Administration, Mayor-elect Slaughter. We have some special guests, Mr. Dave Banks, our elected soon-to-be District Attorney, Ryan Gardner, welcome, sir, and members of the press. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It is both a privilege and honor to be up here as your Chief of Police, to present our budget proposal for 2020 tonight, so thank you. And the first section that we want to go over is the Department of Public Safety. The Office of the Director. Personnel services, made up of salaries, FICA, life insurance, workers' comp, pensions, and health insurance, add up to $93,848. Purchase of services, office rentals, community outreach, total $152,100. Total department expense, $245,948. The personal services are particular to the Administrative Secretary in the Police Department, Mrs. Donna Bauer. And I would welcome any questions on that section.
Are there any questions tonight, Council?
I think it's important that people know that we do not have a Public Safety Director.
Yes, ma'am. Many years ago, as those of you in this room know, the mayor elected to, as you know, the ordinance identifies three departments, one of which is Public Safety, the mayor decided to take that, take on that role as mayor, and so we have not had one.
Correct. So, this is an Administrative Secretary for the Police Department?
Yes. Donna Bauer's position is budgeted in under the Public Safety, her Officer of the Director, but she works in the Office of the Chief of Police in the Administration.
And she's been there how many years? She's been here a long time.
She's worked for the city for 35, approximately more than 30, a long time, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mealy.
Now that John Grado's gone, we should be asking her where everything is. I actually just had, the office rentals, I'm assuming that $151,000, that's the entire Police Department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And community outreach?
$1,000. I have not had any experience with that $1,000, it is there for us to use for community events. My plan next year, although we didn't spend any of it this year, is to get, to get things that have our logo on them, so that we can hand them out, like coffee cups and things like that, but I'll have to go through our new mayor and get approval for that. But we're asking for that amount to be in there, because we, throughout the year, we run into situations where we interact with other agencies and citizens and children, and there are opportunities to hand out stickers, and pamphlets, and all sorts of things for community outreach. So, that's our idea for it, we did not do it. We had some old materials from years past that we handed out this year, going into the next year, we believe we can make use of that.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I just noticed that it hadn't been spent, was sort of wondering what the plan was for it, or how we were dealing with it. That's everything, thank you.
Other questions on this section? Hearing none, let's move on then to the Police Department, pages 48 and 49.
Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Police, Personnel Services, including salaries, overtime, comp time, non-uniform, referring to civilian personnel, FICA, life insurance, workers' comp, pensions for non-uniform, pensions for uniform, and health insurance, for a total of $9,293,653. Purchase of services, including investigative expenses, training, a police academy line item, which is not funded, or we do not propose any funds in that line item this year, travel, subscriptions and dues, K-9 maintenance with no money requested this year, medical, contract services, utilities, for a total of $143,500. Supplies and materials, including general office supplies, gas and oil, fingerprint and photo, uniforms, uniforms initial issue, firearms and ammunition, support equipment and communications, for a total of $259,550. Equipment repairs, which include vehicle repairs, radio repairs, radio maintenance contract, and computer repairs, for a total of $72,800. And finally, equipment, vehicle lease purchase line item, for a total of $60,000, for a total department expense of $9.8 million, or $9,829,503. Some of the highlights in this include, under Personnel Services, our proposal to, the budgeted amount last year was 47. As you know, for part of the year, we were at 48 or more, until one retired and one deployed last year overseas. We are down to 47. We expect a retirement in January, and that officer who's deployed to come back in February. So, on paper, it goes from 47 to a proposed number of 49, and so we're increasing that number. We believe that is necessary, and we actually, the initial request was for more, in consultation with the Finance Department, they believed that it was more responsible to try to, to spread that out over several years, and not do, we requested five, and Mr. Nichols thought it was a better plan to do two this next year, and try, if we can afford it, to do one per year for the following three years. So, we made that change. We are asking for more money, obviously, in our training line item, and if you bear with me for a moment, I'll go over some of that. We have, as you know, changed our rank structure, brought back lieutenant positions in charge of all of our units, and in doing so, we've identified a need for police executive leadership training. It's called POLEX, it's a very good school, run and supervised by Penn State, it's given in different locations. Our goal would be to send all of our lieutenants to that. We want to do leadership training with regard to the Special Response Team, for our two top team leaders and our team commander, Lieutenant Smith. We want to do train-the-trainer use-of-force training through a company called, or organization called AILIDA, we used to do that years ago, and it's very good. We want accreditation training, more accreditation training, associated with the purchase of a new program for $6,800 a year called Power DMS, which is a necessary program for our accreditation process, which we're involved in, and we want to continue. We want to do de-escalation training through force science and other places, de-escalation training is good for use of force. We need training with regard to defensive tactics, this is something we haven't done for years, actually getting our officers out on a mat, going over physical holds and things like that, that literally could save their life in a fight in the middle of the night out here, something we definitely should be doing more of, and we got away from years ago. We have a couple of very skilled officers in this area who are, can't wait to go to school for that, and it's going to be good. So, we're all going to benefit from that. Some other things, like the possibility of having a master fitness trainer, which would benefit all of us with regard to personal health and well-being, firearms training, armorers, and cultural diversity, and sexual harassment, and harassment in the workplace training, always a necessary thing, always something to keep in mind and stay up on. So, those are some of the reasons why we're asking for an increase in that particular line item. As I said, K-9 maintenance, we're not asking to fund that, that is because, obviously, we've established a new K-9 program, and we are doing that through private funding. There is an increase, I'm sorry, in contract services, that increase is due to the need for the Power DMS program that I just mentioned, which is $6,800 a year, and, excuse me. Also, the need to purchase a maintenance agreement through WatchGuard for additional coverage for our in-car cameras, and the continued payment of our Spelman Technologies Maintenance Agreement, which is approximately $42,000 a year. So, that's what makes up that line item. We are increasing the firearms and ammunition budget. I believe in more training. The state asks us to qualify once a year, that is not nearly enough. If we get into a shootout and end up in federal court on a lawsuit, you had, you had better shot more than once a year, or you're going to be in trouble over there. So, my plan is to increase the amount of training that we do, qualify twice a year, not once, and do training twice a year, which wasn't happening, other than just the qualification before, for a total of four times, so we're increasing the amount of ammunition that we need. We're also increasing that line item considerably, due to the need to replace 15-year-old service pistols that we have on our hips, the Glock Model 21s that we all carry, need replaced, they're beyond end-of-life, according to my firearms experts, and so, we have taken a look at the performance of firearms, the magazine capacities, the quality of the new technology in firearms, and we've decided on the Glock Model 45, with, which, after we're allowed to sell back or buy back our current firearms, the total amount of that will be approximately $21,000, and then, a little bit more for the associated equipment that come with the firearms as well. So, that's why you see a significant increase in the firearms budget, because it's become time for us to replace our duty pistols, and it's actually long past time for us to do that. We also change, you see a large change in the vehicle lease purchase line item. Our initial plan was to purchase vehicles, we took a look at vehicles. Our Streets and Parks Director and our primary mechanic advised us on this. We've had a lot of issues with power transfer units, vehicles bottoming out and being damaged because of the clearance on the Explorers. We have issues with regard to the Taurus's not being manufactured anymore, and it's more difficult to get the Explorers like the ones we have. The ones we have, actually, you have to, you have to order like a year in advance, and otherwise, you end up with a hybrid fuel version of it, which is more expensive, and the way it operates, it can cause issues for us with regard to maintenance that may cost a lot more. So, we factored in all those issues, and we took a look at the available vehicles out there. I have a particular issue with some of these cars, you may have looked at our cars, the backseats are much smaller than they used to be, and I have a particular issue with trying to put large prisoners in the back of the car, and them not having enough room to breathe, and the liability issues that can be associated with that. So, we took a look at all of that, ground clearance, backseat capacity, safety, the size of the cab where the officer sits, the potential for ambushes on the officer, the ability to draw a firearm quicker and respond to such an attack while they're sitting there doing their paperwork at night, and our best efforts identified the Chevy Tahoe as the best vehicle. So, we decided, having not purchased any vehicles this year at all in 2019, that we would go for a plan that would involve the purchase of three of those, and then we have, for many years, and for many reasons, we've needed a truck to haul large evidence, and to respond to training needs, and we have several reasons why we need a truck in our department, and when we don't have one, then we always have to call for support from Streets and Parks, and they may not be available, and our CERT team sometimes could use the use of a truck. So, we came up with the Chevy Silverado, so our plan is to buy, or our initial plan was to buy a Silverado and three Tahos, the initial cost of which was going to be approximately $180,000. At the last minute, and in an effort to come up with a no-tax increase budget, the alternate plan was a lease, which is approximately $42,000 a year, 41 and change for the lease. Now, the additional money making up $60,000 was money that, when our team got together and talked, we looked at the age of the camera systems in the cars, and it's five years, we just finished our last payment to WatchGuard for over $20,000 this year, some of the cameras are starting to get old, and so, there's money in there for the potential need to replace some camera systems in vehicles, additional money for that purpose. Those are some of the highlights. Obviously, one of our primary goals, as I've been saying all year, is to become an accredited agency. It not only reduces liability insurance, police liability insurance costs, but the prestige of becoming an agency in search of best practices, opening up our doors, being more transparent, allowing our agency to be inspected by some of the best law enforcement officials in this state, will invite constructive criticism, it'll make us better as an agency, it'll make us better as police leaders, and ultimately make us one of the best police departments in the state, which I think we already are, and I think this process will prove that. It'll also help us out, you know, in other ways, like if we were to get sued and have to go into court, the whole situation is better if we're accredited when we go in there as an agency, and we've passed inspections, and we're going by our own policies and training and things like that. So, with that in mind, I open it up to any questions.
Mrs. Katz.
I'd like to talk about the lease program, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Is these vehicles, is that including the truck also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so really, it's three vehicles and a truck, so it's four vehicles then?
Four vehicles leased, the, each of the Tahos is $10,700 a year, and the truck is $8,800 a year, for a total cost of approximately $41,000, $42,000 a year.
How about outfitting all of these vehicles?
That includes the outfitting.
That includes?
Yes, ma'am.
Really?
It does.
So, all you'd have to do is, even with the cameras and everything else?
Yes, ma'am, we transfer the old cameras, but as I said, there's a little additional money in there, in case we need to replace some of the cameras, because they're starting to get older, and we should start replacing some of them, yes, ma'am.
And the paint?
It includes that.
That includes that?
Actually, there will be, I didn't say that earlier, but we're going for a new look, the black and white will change slightly to all black with the patch on the side, similar, the similar markings, but the white doors are going to, we're not, we're not going to have the door, and so, we save the associated cost of having to paint all the doors white. They just come black, and we put the stickers on them, and we're good, so.
Save money?
Yes, that'll save money, yep.
Right there, right a second.
Talk to me, Randy?
Well, I did, how long's the length of the lease?
Five years.
Five years.
And then we buy them for a dollar at the end of that.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, that was more or less what I was going to ask, and then, the, so that makes the cost about $45,000 for each of the Tahos, correct?
Yes, ma'am, I can get you the exact cost, give me one moment. Yes, approximately.
Approximately. What would the cost be to purchase them outright?
$47,132 for the Tahos, $38,027 for the Silverado.
So, they're cheaper if we lease them for five years than if we buy them outright?
I'll get you the exact number, give me a minute.
MSRP?
I don't know. Because in that case, we've discovered something brilliant.
No, there's, there are more. The lease, the lease, the Tahos, $53,980.
Okay.
And so, we're spending more than $6,000 more.
Extra, in the grand, in the grand scheme of things.
Yep.
Not to mention that we are, in many ways, sort of, once again placing the debts of the present on the future, as we've often done in the city, in ways large and small, with pensions, with other employment, other post-employment benefits. So, the grand total cost to only put $60,000 in this year's budget for vehicles is something around $25,000 or $30,000 in the long run, in increased cost of the vehicles.
Just those vehicles, it would be more than that if we got all 18 of our smaller vehicles in a lease pattern, but in a year when we're trying to bring officers back, and increase the size of the force, it assists us with that effort in this one year.
I mean, I understand the trade-offs and the goals there, it simply seems to me, when we initially had the funding to purchase those vehicles outright in the budget, and save ourselves 25, 30 grand over the next five years, to delay that, to add, of course, because we'll have $60,000 built in next year for leasing these vehicles, as well as another $60,000 for leasing other vehicles, so within a couple of years, we're going to be, it's going to be up to 180, 190 one way or the other, and we're not going to be owning any of the vehicles outright, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, that seems like a decision that we should be thinking about before we finish the budget here over the next couple of weeks. Let me see if I had any further questions. The funding in the firearms ammunition line item replaces all of the firearms we have on the force?
All the services, all the service pistols that we carry, it does not replace the subguns, AR-15s or long guns, but all of the duty pistols that we all carry, yes, ma'am.
Got it, and what's the status of those other rifles and long guns that we have? Are they all so close to end of life, or are they in better shape?
Yes, the subguns are old, they're in good working order, they obviously don't get used near as much as the pistols, so they're still in good working order, but we do have plans in the future to replace the old UMP subguns with other, but not this year.
Got it, so we'll be looking at that in the next couple of years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I think that's everything I have for right now. Thanks, Randy. And thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Henderson?
I know this year, there was some rank restructuring and all of that, one of the concerns was with overtime, and I'm looking at the budget here, we came under what we had budgeted. I wonder if you could just speak to that, just how that worked out, just because I know through the year, we saw some spikes, what seemed to be in overtime.
Our last administration worked to reduce overtime, they accomplished that task. Each administration follows the path that they believe is most responsible. Our path, we believe we needed to make some changes, one of which was the change on six out of 21 shifts last year, in last June, six out of the 21 shifts per week were changed from a manpower level of four officers and a supervisor down to three officers and a supervisor. I personally believe that that is an officer safety issue, and early on in our new police administration... And early on, in our, our new police administration, requested permission and did change that back to four, at least four, on two of the shifts. And then, our evening shift was always at five. And, and obviously, the night watch between four and 12 does approximately half of the work, sees a lot of violent crime, and is very busy. So, they've always been at five for at least the last 15 years. So, that has caused a small increase, just the need to have, on six shifts, have one more officer. Keep in mind, the vast majority of our overtime, if you look at our schedule throughout the year, we're just one down. There are some shifts where we're two down, some guys are sick or injured, some officers. But the vast majority are one, were one down on that shift for that day. So, if we theoretically had one more per shift, then a vast portion of the overtime goes away, even with the, uh, the, you know, officer being away at school, or being, you know, off, or, or being on vacation. Obviously, though, the increase in size costs more. Costs more to have an officer than to pay overtime to cover that officer. But we have to look at a plan that we, that, you know, an initial strategy that, that requires too much overtime. You have officers strung out, you have them, uh, working too much, too many hours in a row. No one's gonna raise their hand if I asked you, who wants to have a cranky officer show up at your house at three o'clock in the morning? No one's gonna say, "Me." But the issue is, is, is very human. It's not just numbers. So, we've seen an increase because of that, that change in manpower. We obviously see an increase, or spikes, as you called it, sir, when we, uh, when we have violent crimes and the need to properly staff those investigations and respond, not only that night, but in the days and weeks that follow. When we have large trials and large numbers of officers who need to go, we see spikes in overtime there. They don't all work eight to four, they can't all go there while they're on duty. And so, some of that creates overtime. So, our plan going forward is to have a few more people. And to staff the shifts properly, which should decrease the amount of overtime. It's one of the reasons why we, uh, we went ahead and proposed $20,000 less this year, because we think it'll go down. And we believe it may even come underneath that. So, those are just some of the causes of the overtime. Also, last year, and really the last three years, there was a different philosophy in management with regard to who's in charge of a shift. And what we saw in '16 through '18 was a strategy called OICs, or Officers in Charge, where we just had officers, many of whom only had three, four, five years on the job, who were just assigned without any training, or without even asking them to be in charge of a shift. And that might work in a borough or township where there's only one guy on duty. But I can promise you that that does not work in the city of Williamsport, with the city police department and the challenges that we face. Twenty-six of our officers have less than seven years on the job. And there is absolutely no way that, that we should be fielding squads of young officers without a supervisor on duty. So, um, we changed that policy early on in the year, the need for a supervisor. And we didn't, we, we weren't able to get rid of all of it. Um, I'm, I'm not trying to misrepresent that. We have had some OICs, but we've had senior officers, very senior officers, on those few shifts that we've had. I believe it's less than 50, I don't have the exact number. But each of the last three years, it was more than 100. And in '16 through '18, there were 377 separate shifts where we fielded a patrol shift without a supervisor, which is completely unacceptable and raises our level of liability to an unacceptable level. So, we've drastically reduced that, but in doing so, we've created a need that existed before 2016, where we have to have a supervisor on duty. Therefore, you need to fill overtime more. And, uh, so it's a trade-off. It's a reduction in liability, but there's a cost. But I can promise you that that cost is, that money is well spent.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, to mention, I mean, it, through the year, we were concerned, I was concerned, uh, that we were gonna overshoot that budget. And, uh, it was a relief to me, you know, when I saw this and, and saw where we actually didn't, we came in underneath, and in fact, you're budgeting less for that this year. Uh, and so, in spite of those structural changes that kind of gave us all a little hesitation, I think that it seems that the department is running well, and our overtime may even be coming down. So, I just wanted to mention that, I think that's important for us to consider as well. That, uh, though we have fears, they're not always realities, and so, we're thankful for that. Let's see, did I have anything else? I think that's everything I have.
Anybody else?
I have a few questions. And under, um, purchase of services, medical, that's $3,500, that's $3,000 this year, how is that different than health, what's under the health insurance?
These are required services. If we had an officer in distress, and we had to determine whether that officer was fit for duty, and the chief of police needed to order that officer to get a medical exam of any kind, whether it be physical or psychological, that would come out of that.
Okay.
It would be incurred, those costs would be incurred by the city. Polygraph services, be it for, uh, a new, new hire, which we eliminated that process. I do plan to bring them back, by the way, but they were eliminated under the last administration. Polygraph services also in internal matters as well, when they become necessary, would come out of, uh, that line item as well. So, uh, but generally, it's, uh, it's something that is there when, when we need to do fitness of duty, uh, examinations and things like that for officers.
Okay, uh, also, I remember several years ago, we were really concerned about the management system, the records management system. And I, and I think something was purchased called the Spillman?
Yes.
Could you, it's, it's, where is that Spillman software process in here? And do we still use that system?
We do, and it is, and it is a valuable system, to the extent that we can get them to, to make the necessary changes and follow their maintenance agreement. Last year, for instance, several of our requests were not fulfilled in the $42,000 maintenance agreement. We didn't have to pay the entire 42, and Mr. Cooley, I think, was able to negotiate that down to like $26,000 at the end of the year, because they didn't get everything done. But when they get everything done, and they keep up on our needs, it is a very valuable system. It is, it is much better than, uh, than, uh, the old Ford system. I do, and I, I am aware that there were, I guess, some promises made about how we could eventually reduce the size of the records department. I honestly don't know why those were made, and don't know who they were made by. I've taken a good, long look at our records department. We have three extraordinary employees in there, one with 42 years, one with 32 years, and one with 20 years. We've looking at, we've looked at all the, the, the things that they do in the department. Just for instance, uh, message center stuff, every report that comes in by every officer. We handled 11,000 incidents last year, we're over 12,000 this year, and we have a month to go yet. Arrests, affidavits, complaints, monthly UCR stats, pursuit forms, dispositions, expungement orders from the court, they handle all court orders, responses, department stats, NCIC validations. This is an extraordinary task that used to be done by officers, but they've picked this up in records, because obviously, we, our size, and this happened a few years ago, but the size of our force has dwindled over the years. This, this is something where the state mandates that we keep an eye on all of our stolen guns, missing persons, wanted persons, that we enter into the National Crime Information Center. We have to make sure that these things are still missing. We literally have to call the owners of these stolen pieces of property. Is it still missing, do you still want to prosecute? This is a lengthy process, records handles that. They handle all file attachments. While we're not necessarily all paper like we used to be, we still have a lot of important documents that have to be scanned and attached in an organized way. Thousands and thousands of documents over the course of a year that become crucial in prosecutions later, and they have to ensure that they're all attached. Statistical reports, as I said, including college stats, colleges request stats all the time. They, uh, they handle all accident reports, background checks for law enforcement, government, military, parking citations, quarterly stats. Just a huge amount of tasks. So, we took a look at what each of them do to see if it was possible or even feasible. I don't believe it would be responsible to reduce the size at this time of that unit. I don't know why you were told that back then, I don't. If I was the person in charge back then, I would not have said that, if it was like it is now back then. I do realize there was an effort to reduce some of the, uh, some of the programs that we had, and make it more paperless, and eventually move toward getting rid of a person. I don't believe this is the time to do that. I'm not saying we'll never do that, but when we took a hard look at what they do on a daily basis, we, uh, we decided against it. Also, when you have only three, and you go down to two, these are very senior employees, they have long periods of vacation. And so, when you go down to two employees, then the records department, even if they could give up an employee for short periods of time, when, when they go down to two for any length of time, then they fall behind. And then, critical things like reports that need to be entered and available to the district attorney's office and the police department are not in there. And they sit, sit and stack up, or they stack up in a electronic file somewhere when they need to be getting processed. Right now, they keep up on all that with three, and it's available to us quickly. I worked there in years past when the stuff would pile up for months and months and months, and we'd be getting in the old database and say, "Where's this report? I filed it like three months ago, and it wasn't in there." This, this new system, and that number of employees, and the way, the vast experience that they have, has us in a position where the records department itself is firing on all cylinders. They're doing really good work down there, and we don't want to upset that.
That really wasn't my question.
I'm sorry.
My question was, where is it budgeted in your budget?
Oh, sorry.
I know that the software and the record management system was very important, because I know that 12 years ago, we didn't have that kind of software. And it was purchased, you know, like 10 years ago, and I, the maintenance of that and the...
The maintenance is in contract services, 42,000 of the 61,000 proposed is Spillman technology maintenance.
Okay, that was my question.
Sorry.
Didn't know where that was. Okay, another question that I have, um, if I look here. When we look at automobiles, and I think the report of your vehicle list was outstanding, I really appreciate that report. And when we look at it, I looked, there's 11 that are in good shape, six that are fair, and five that are poor. If we're going to purchase or lease or whatever, and I, I really think we should purchase and not lease, that's my own personal opinion, three, they'll take care of the four, of the five that are poor? I mean, you're, a police officer driving a vehicle that's poor is totally unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned. So, how do we take care of these five that are under, in poor shape?
Let me see, which ones we're replacing first here?
Uh, it's, uh, it's the 2011 Ford Crown Vic, the 2006, the 2014 Ford Taurus, which is, and there are two of those, that's, that's discouraging. Matter of fact, there are three of those. There were three Ford Tauruses bought in 2014, and, and all three of those are, four of those, three of them are listed as poor.
Yes. Obviously, we don't have the money to purchase, uh, yes, there are more than the four that we, uh, we have here. As I said earlier, our initial plan was to purchase, and so, we came up with a plan to purchase four. At the last minute, that changed, so we just changed to leasing four. Could we afford to lease more? Yes, but it, the plan hap, or the change to the plan happened at the last minute, and so, we did not add more to the number. We could now that we're leasing, we could do that.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do we replace those five that are poor? Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one other thing, in the discussion with Chief, uh, for your vehicles, he feels very confident he can reduce a fleet's size. So, we'd be replacing not the very poor, they'd be phased out anyway.
Correct.
But, so, I, you know, I want to make sure everybody knows that we're not, you know, they're not operating those vehicles that are in poorer shape. It's, I think ultimately with his plan, he feels that he can reduce the overall fleet's size, and that would take care of itself.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
And, and also on that front, I would just like to give my compliments to Streets and Parks, Mr. Winder and our mechanic Dale, phenomenal people who we rely on every day. They take care of our vehicles, all of them, very well. And, uh, it, if it wasn't good to go, they would tell us, and it wouldn't be on the road. So, it may say poor, but it's, it's safe. They're safe, or they wouldn't be out there, and we trust them.
And one, I'm sorry, one more question. I gotta keep you, then I'm asking too many questions, but I ask my questions.
This is the time to ask.
Talk to me about grants. I mean, it seems to me that, that there should be some grants out there, federal grants for public safety, for equipment and guns and automobiles and those kinds of things. I understand not salaries and benefits, but, but the kind of everyday thing that you're using. Are there, are there federal grants out there, or state grants?
From time to time, there are, federal and state. Federal money through state agencies like PCCD, um, state grants, DCED, they do still exist. We would like to pursue them. We are just doing well to run our police department efficiently right now. I, I believe we should develop a strategy going forward as a city, not just as a police department, to pursue grant funding on a, in a more organized way. I worked grants years ago, and we did get money, hundreds and thousands of dollars of it, some of which we actually drew down and used. The SRO grant is a great, great example of that, but there were others. There have been equipment grants over the years. The money, uh, becomes available from time to time, you have to be ready. You have to, you can't be, uh, you know, you can't try to put a, a plan together when the, the grant site comes out. You are, you need a team in place already, and when that comes open, you need to be able to like hit the ground running day one, because you're competing against other areas. And, and the co, the competitive process goes hand in hand with the accreditation and the need to become more professional that I, I was describing earlier, because we are competing with other jurisdictions for a lot of this money, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I'm just, I'm, I'm just curious, is it, is it the plan to transition to an entire fleet that's all black vehicles, black colored vehicles?
I would like to do that. We're gonna, we're gonna do that with these four, and, and see what they look like, and see how the community responds to them, and then we will adjust. We don't dictate, the community's part of it. Certainly, uh, all of you in this room will tell us how you feel. I personally like them, and, uh, my staff liked the idea as well, and so, we wanted to try it. It also saves a little bit of money, so the two things go hand in hand. It, it changes the visibility without the black and white or the white doors, but, uh, we think they're gonna look pretty nice.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Um, Chief, regarding the vehicles, um, they're substantially bigger than what we have. Is that, is the fuel cost taken into account in the budget?
Yes, sir, it was. Bear with me for a moment. I, I, I spoke directly to Mr. Winder about this. Fuel costs have been budgeted at 60,000. The end of the year, '18, we're at 52.
Right.
This year, we're, uh, we're gonna come under, or we're expected to come under as well. We believe that, uh, obviously, they don't get the same gas mileage. I don't have the exact figures, it's similar, but it's not, not as good as the smaller vehicle. We believe that the other assets that, that I described outweigh, uh, some minor additional fuel costs. We're gonna monitor, uh, the use and the change, if there is any, in costs. The, uh, but yes, we did discuss that, I discussed it with Mr. Winder. I asked him his opinion and whether he thought it would make that much of a difference. His opinion on it was that he didn't believe it would change the budget in any significant way. I'm not entirely convinced of that yet, but with the purchase of three of these vehicles that we're gonna be using on a regular basis, we're gonna take a look at that and, and see. It won't be, we're not replacing the entire fleet, only three, so.
Um, some of us were talking before the meeting about the difference between leasing and buying. And leases have res... buying and leases have restrictions on them was one of the things we brought up. Does that apply to these vehicles?
It was no, sir. Mr. Babonis, the salesman, we asked him about that. With regard to maintenance and mileage, there are no restrictions. So we ensured that that was the case before we even considered it as an option. And so, no.
Good. I had one other question. Considering the staffing, in the short time you've been chief, I've gotten to talk to you several times and impressed by how you plan and think things out. What I...
Thank you.
You're welcome. You deserve it. So two police this year and three more officers, one at a time, that must fit into some kind of usage plan you have overall.
It does. It does. The plan, thank you for bringing that up, sir. We get so focused on the numbers, we forget to describe what our overall plan is. The plan is, we're the Williamsport Bureau of Police and people need our help. We get the most reps. We have a lot of talent. The other agencies in the area, not just the small ones, the big ones, the FBI, the Drug Enforcement Administration, and certainly our county, which I have to give my compliments to. In the last 10 years, our county has increased the size of its sheriff department, taken on a huge economic burden. They've increased the size. They've basically, out of thin air, invented a narcotics enforcement unit with several detectives. I won't get into the exact number because that, I'll leave that as a confidential number. But several detectives that we used to have to supply and other area departments used to have to supply, which meant mainly us, they have footed the bill in benefits and salaries for those officers for many years now and assisted the city. As you can imagine, the vast majority of narcotics investigations that go on in Lake Humming County occur in the city. So why does this have to do with our plan? We believe overall, we should be feeding those task forces with assistance and not just the one day a week kind. Right now, I have an officer who works a few days a week in the narcotics enforcement unit. But just last year, when we still had 51, we were able to have a full-time guy there. In years past, we've had as many as three, four or five full-time people and that number has dwindled down at 47 on paper with one deployed. We can't afford to have a full-time officer there. They need our help. Those detectives over there, most of them were not city cops. In years past, many of them have not been city cops. They're not as familiar with the city. They need the help of our officers on the task force. Also, we have an officer who works a lot of the time with the United States Marshal Service. This is an incredible partnership that we have. Officer Jason Docky was our officer of the quarter for the second quarter this year. If you saw that citation with regard to his performance, we're talking about a lot of people, over 50 people, many of them dangerous people off the street because a guy like Officer Docky with the talent he has is able to not be in a patrol car answering calls but to work with the marshals. It's not that they can't catch people, but again, he's a city officer, he knows the city and as a member of a task force like that, if we could somehow get enough people where Jason could work over there full-time, that means more offenders, many of them violent offenders who might otherwise shoot somebody are gonna get caught on the warrant that they have from whatever crime they committed. And they're not gonna commit however many violent offenses that they would otherwise commit if we did not lock them up. So there's a huge benefit to having our people involved in these task forces, one of which, maybe the most important of which, is that we have all of these opportunities to arrest violent offenders before they get a gun in their hand and kill somebody. And those opportunities present themselves primarily in narcotics investigations and in fugitive apprehensions. And so these two task forces, the narcotics enforcement unit and the United States Marshals Task Force are very important and we need to be putting people in them. Also, as I described to Mr. Henderson earlier, the ability to have at least just one more person on a shift, it not only helps deal with overtime, which is an obvious benefit immediately, but it also helps spread the work out. Three officers in the patrol division with an average amount of vacation of three weeks and 11 holidays, even if they don't take any sick time, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,400 man-hours out there. So think about what really, really young, really energetic officers can do with 5,400 hours out here. How many more dangerous people can be caught? How many crimes can be prevented by just putting three more people in the patrol division, one on each shift? This is, if we can afford it, which is your decision, and if we can, we recommend it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One other thing, you mentioned the training budget and you went through the different, several different aspects of the training. Would it be possible for you to give council members some printout of what the training is so we can refer to that?
Yes.
In the coming year and get an understanding of the scope and breadth of the training?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we appreciate that.
No, that's not a problem. We can get that to you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Mr. Novio.
Back to the weaponry again, just very quickly. You mentioned that we do a lot of training with our short guns and therefore they're in a situation now where they should be replaced or at least given consideration for it being replaced. But that wasn't the case for our long guns. When it comes to the training itself, are they equal in time as far as long gun training versus short handgun training?
The state requires us to train on our duty pistols. We also train on ARs. We don't allow officers to carry or use long guns without qualifying at least once a year on them. But the actual requirement for the state is for duty pistols, the pistol you carry all the time.
I'm assuming then that that's the reason why we're not looking to replace the long guns because they have more longevity?
Well, we just don't use them as much. We don't shoot them as much and use them as much. And so, and we, and some of those are not as old. Some of those ARs have been purchased in the years since the initial purchase of all the duty weapons back in, or most of them back, I think it was in 2004. So not all of them are that old. The UMP subguns used by the CERT team are about that old, but they don't get as much use. In talking with the team leader of the CERT team, the longtime member, Agent Jeremy Brown, he has indicated that they should be replaced, but we don't need to replace them right away. And so we thought it was responsible to split this up and not try to do it all at one time. And so we'll be looking, yes, sir, we'll be looking at doing it down the road. Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Mealy.
And just one more follow-up question about the extra officers on the force. Well, and I guess in particular, I've been asked recently by a surprisingly large number of people about police officers on the street instead of in cars, community policing, officers on horses, which I thought was a bit of a long shot, but bikes, which I thought might happen. Talk to me a bit about how that plays into your plan for the next couple of years. I think it's great if we have officers participating in, you know, countywide narcotics forces and things like that, but we also need to create, policing in Williamsport ideally is less about intervening in violent crime that's in progress and more about interacting with people to make certain that that violent crime isn't happening in the first place. How do we see, do you see additional officers on the force being able to connect directly with the people in our community and prevent crime by a solid FaceTime with the community versus what we currently have now, which is mostly officers in cars?
The Bureau believes in community policing, but not as a specific unit like we did so many years ago. It would be wonderful to have that unit back, but we don't have that kind of money these days. So what we've employed is a Bureau-wide or department-wide community policing philosophy. As I described earlier in the year, we implemented three programs, Park and Walk, High Visibility and Clean Community, in an effort to give officers credit for what they were already doing and that is, many of our officers do what you described. They get out, they walk enthusiastically. As I said before, 26 officers with less than seven years, many of them, you'll find them out of their cars walking every single night when weather permits. They are fantastic cops. And so, but what we weren't doing is we weren't giving them credit for it. We were tallying the number of arrests, we were tallying the number of citations and things like that, but the amount of times spent out of the car, we didn't. And so what we did before I became chief, so what we did was we implemented these programs, we made them really simple. If you call out on a park and walk, you get credit for it. We can look on the computer in our Spillman database and track the exact number of times any one officer on the department has gotten out of their car for a park and walk or been highly visible in a high crime area or a high traffic area to prevent crime or traffic accidents. Or any time they've called in a quality of life issue like a street light out or a hole in the road or a codes violation or anything like that. Now we give them credit. So when we evaluate them at the end of the year, we're not just evaluating them on enforcement, but we're doing a whole evaluation of their performance. And in doing so, we have changed the culture, in my view. We've had thousands of contacts. It's helped develop relationships that didn't exist this year with individual people. It has helped, not in every case. We expect that it will help more in the future as we go along, but it has helped introduce our young officers, many of them to community policing in a real way, not the way we were when we had our own unit with yellow shirts and bikes and all that, but in a different way, that it's a department-wide responsibility, whether you have a suit and tie on or whether you're a chief or whether you're a street cop or maybe even a narcotics person. If someone stops you and wants to talk to you, whether you're on duty, off duty, you make the time if you can, if you possibly can, because we are a Bureau of Police that belongs to the community. So we do employ that philosophy. We believe in it. We are open to suggestions as well. We don't think that we know it all, but we have a pretty good idea of how good of a city we have here and we're interested in talking to people about how we can help.
That's excellent. Yeah, like I said, it's, that has definitely been perhaps the number one thing that's come up in people talking to me about the police recently, is how much they'd like to see them out of their cars. So I think to the extent that we can focus on that in the city, it seems like it'll help our relationship citywide. My second question related to the zero dot line item for the police academy. And I know that you and I had had some discussions earlier this year about trying to bring back, just for the benefit of new council members. In the past, we have made an arrangement where we will hire before officers have police academy training and that can expand our hiring pool substantially because you're looking at a lot of people, especially if we're hoping to perhaps hire a more diverse police force, a lot of people who might or might not be able to afford to move on the training without the guarantee of a position afterward. And so we have, we had in the past, but haven't for the last couple of years, agreed to, remind me, Chief, it was a split wage, basically. A portion of the wage went to paying for the police academy and a portion of the wage went to the officer upon hiring.
Half.
Yes.
You make, if you do not have the academy, under the new resolution and the new plan, which is similar to the last time we did this, going back 20 years, we just paid the full wage, the full police officer A wage while you're in the academy. Then we couldn't afford to send people to the academy. Our officers, the size of our civil service list dwindled to a small number. They decided to bring the academy back. They did so for a few years and the size of the list went up again because you, obviously you enlarge your pool if you hire people that haven't put themselves through a six or seven month academy. This academy is long and it is a huge chore to go without a full-time job in order to do it and a lot of people are not able. So this year, after four lists ago, we had 47 with this program. It went down to 27 and then when we got rid of it, our list went from 47 to 27 down to seven. And then the last list, we only had four people on our civil service list, which is unacceptable. So when I came in in January, one of our first priorities was, how do you fix that? I talked to the mayor several times over the course of three or four months. The mayor approved a new plan, which was similar to the old one, like I said, which involves a police officer A cadet wage, which the salary is, it's half of the first year's salary. And that half of the first year's salary, while they're in the academy, is what we use to pay for the police academy. And then when they graduate the police academy, their wage then gets bumped up to the regular police officer A wage. That is why in consultation with Budget Officer, Mr. Pavlock, he indicated that we don't fund money or don't request funds in that line item because we're doing it a different way.
Got it. So basically, it's reflected, obviously, at the salary line.
Currently reflected in a salary line. If we would need to use, if individuals would go to the academy, we would do a transfer down to cover the cost of the police academy itself.
Got it. So we will show it in the year-end budget if we do want.
For those that are, those that need the academy, yes.
Good. Thank you very much, both of you. Okay.
Other questions from council members? To follow up on that just quickly, that regression in the civil service list, over what period of time did that take place, that it went from 47 to 27 to seven and then four?
The space of four lists, each of them approximately two years. I believe one of the lists was exhausted prior to the two years. When you get down to lists that are less than 10, you can see how, you could easily exhaust that in less than a two-year period. So six to eight years, it went from 47 down to four. Our effort was, in a very short period of time, we split the state up into four groups. We asked for volunteers. We got 14 or 15 of our 47 volunteered to be part of this. They traveled all over the state, went to police academies and had a great time meeting young cadets. And we got people from as far away as Police Academy and Erie. Three of them came down here to take our tests. So we expect next time with more notice and more preparation and planning, that we should have maybe 100 or more applicants here. And that's our goal, to become more diverse.
Great. Thank you. I think that closes your portion, Chief Hagan.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Fire Department, pages 42 and 43, and welcome, Chief Heppmann.
Good evening, Council President Allison and all the members of council, new faces and existing. Tonight, we were offered to give you the 2020 General Fund budget for the Bureau of Fire. I will say we are ending an exciting year of 2019. As you know, by now, almost a third of the department has been replaced. The senior guys, we will miss, they will be missed. Their knowledge and work ethic cannot be replaced, but there's a vibe of new blood on the floor. You've all experienced it. Chief Hagan of Police Department, been living it for a while and we welcome that and it's an energetic, fun time coming in the years ahead. So I just wanted to get that in there first and let you know that although the numbers are gonna change significantly from 2019 to 2020, have you seen them already? That has a lot to do with the overload and with the exemptions and the retirements and that little space that we all predicted would happen and we budgeted for. I think it will be pleasant going into 2020. So. Under Bureau of Fire, under Personal Services. So we have salaries, overtime, FICA Medicare A, life insurance, workers' comp, pensions, non-uniform, pensions, health insurance and severance pay for a total of $6,368,888. Next category is purchase of services, water and sewer, crawl stations, light and power, heat. Water and sewer, crawl stations, light and power, heat, fire prevention and investigation, training, travel, telephones, subscription, and dues, for a total of $95,500. If you switch to page forty-three, we'll continue on with supplies and materials. These include general office supplies, cleaning supplies, gas and oil, uniforms, protective clothing, other supplies, fire hydrants and laterals, for a total of $85,500. Category of repairs and maintenance. This will include vehicle repairs, communications, miscellaneous repairs, contract services, facility maintenance, for a total of $153,500. And then finally, under equipment, category of support equipment, for a total of $58,000. Gives a total operating budget for the Department Bureau of Fire for 2020 of $6,761,388.
Thank you, chief. Questions tonight from council members? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, not necessarily particularly related to this budget as we're seeing it. Could you give us just a brief rundown on the pay fares, circumstance we have ourselves with pay fares?
What was that again?
If you would give us a rundown on the pay fares, circumstance where we get some remuneration for services we provide and the equipment that is used up?
I am having difficult hearing up here, Chris.
A couple months back, we worked on the process to allow us to regain some funds that we lost in the process of working fires and such.
Okay.
I think it was called pay fares, I thought.
Okay. On the PAFERS?
PAFERS, okay.
Yes, all right.
You could help us with a little bit of a rundown on that.
By all means, sorry about that. This year, beginning with ordinance or a resolution, we went with the PAFERS recovery system. This was going to be a long, not a long-term, but talking with Mr. Metter with them, they revealed about a year to start seeing a full turnaround of this, and started seeing income. I think year-to-date, Joe, we've seen $1,500, maybe, in income in that, roughly. And also, you've got to understand, it's driven by motor vehicle accidents. We had some spikes, then it kind of dried up a little bit, and also has to do what services are performed at those incidents. A lot of them are no injury, non-reportables. There's no leaks or nothing. We just drive away, there's nothing billable. We are in a state right now where there's quite a bit out. It takes time for that to come back in and roll back to us. He did say, once you get that first year under your belt, and then we start getting revolving recoveries, we'll start seeing a more probably better path of what could be coming in on a normal basis. So, we're ups and downs right now, and again, it's all insurance-driven, as you know.
Thank you. I just thought the public would be interested in knowing we're making those types of attempts to salvage some funds and equipment.
And I want to thank you for helping us get that going. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pelizai, do you have your hand up before?
I did, but I already found the answer I was looking for.
Okay. Ms. Mealy?
And I was going to ask a little bit. We talked a lot earlier this year about increasing attempts to regionalize the use of our fire department. We do have one of the few paid fire departments in the immediate area, and it seems as though we wind up providing services to communities kind of around us with relative frequency. I know that they also respond, that their volunteer firefighters also respond to events in the city sometimes. But talk to me a bit about how our agreement with Old Lake Coming is going, and if we're working on anything else.
The agreement that exists at Old Lake Coming is still intact. As you know, the West End engine there, Engine 14-1, which has two of our personnel man there, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, is still a serviceable truck, still under the company. As far as moving outward, if any other regionalization, that is going to be at the hands of the next mayor-elect when he comes up. This really starts at a higher political level, to where those get engaged, because when you're using funding, as we know, we're not free. And that is where that needs to be engaged and started. We tried it at different levels. At our level, it always seems like you're trying to take something from somebody else's sandbox. And it's not that it wasn't for in vain for any reason, it's just a matter of covering costs. As you know, the Bureau of Fire goes out of the city quite a bit, but it also relies on our partners outside of our city walls to come in and support our efforts as also. So currently, it's a two-way street. We will engage Mayor Slaughter when he sits down, and I'm sure he would be, he's going to be well and open to starting those bridges again. So, I think we're all feeling that right now. Everybody's getting a feel for it, it's not just here, it's statewide, and we're probably in the same boat as a lot of the communities are right now.
Yeah. I mean, I think that certainly statewide, there's a push toward regionalization, and there have been issues statewide with the viability of volunteer fire departments, which are helping to push that. So now is clearly an opportune moment for us to attempt to engage in discussions like that. But I can understand how it would have to come from a higher level of administration than just the fire department itself to begin that conversation.
You know, the realism of this also is, when we see the candidates sign up to take our test, and speaking with chiefs from Wilkes-Barre, Scranton, New York, and around, they're all seeing a steep decline in the amount of applicants showing up for these tests. So, it's a very scary scenario that's winding down the road, is when we run out of firefighters, qualified, certified firefighters.
I would say that I think that the job market is especially difficult right now, and that I suspect that will change likely shortly. But, you know, I think everybody's having a hard time finding and retaining qualified applicants. I don't think that the fire department's unique in that.
We kind of use the example as that there's no app for fighting fire yet. And that's where we're headed.
Thanks very much, chief.
Mrs. Katz?
I see nothing in here for new vehicles or anything.
With the purchase of the Tahoe this year, in 2019, we look as forward probably to purchasing one more support vehicle in 2020. Those monies on a lease program are already covered, and we can use some budget monies within either our support equipment line, or if we have to extract some from vehicle maintenance to make a lease payment. We're looking right now into 2020 to see how this plays out, especially with existing apparatus, making sure there's no major repairs coming down the road, and what path or which way we're going to head with the swift water rescue team. If we're getting out to do inspections, once the lieutenants are proposed with those, well, we're going to need a vehicle to support that. Heaven forbid we get in an accident and we lose a vehicle. So, we can sit back, but we are looking at probably doing one more support vehicle in 2020, and then rotating out an older vehicle, and then keep bringing it up, much like Chief Hagan is doing in the Police Department. But those monies are covered already in the budget if we have to use those. We just have to squeeze some other things on the road.
Big trucks and everything are okay?
Keeping our fingers crossed right now, they're all in service, operating currently. I hope you didn't jinx us. It's okay.
A follow-up on the vehicles. Last year, I had a note that the contract services line was for, we need a new engine in two years, and that was the beginning of budgeting for that. Is that continuing through this year? It looks like it's...
With an increase there?
Well, there was an increase, and now it looks like it's decreased. The proposal is $10,500. It went from $11,000 in 2018, proposed $14,000.
$10,500.
In 2019.
Yes, that had to, the reason we were at fourteen last year is for testing for new firefighters.
So there was extra.
So, we're not testing this year, so we can just take all those facility-associated costs of bringing the tests up, having them graded, you know, having to get the facilities to run these kids through their tests, background check, everything that's associated, much like when cadets come into the Police Department, we absorb that cost to get this list made for civil service. And now that list is made, that'll hold for two years, so that can, we can take that fund down and sit there where we're at right now and maintain our normal contract services accounts.
Okay. But there's no budgeting in there for a new engine?
No hires, not to go through the process. And we're not expecting any retirements this year in 2020, so therefore, we keep it. I believe we have a cushion for one, maybe, Joe, on severance, if a retirement pops up, but other than that, not for the academy. And if we have to, our budget out of the training and travel will cover up to at least one right now. If not, we'll have to pull from other funds to move that around.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't speaking clearly. I'm not talking about a new hire.
Okay.
I had a note that it was budgeting for a new engine.
Oh, that would have been under the capital projects budget?
I don't recall your note from last year, and being that it was only fifteen, fourteen-thousand from last year.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, yeah.
That seems kind of low to start setting money aside for an engine, which is going to be close to a million bucks, so.
Right.
I'm not exactly sure. I know in Act 13, we've tried to set money aside in community development. We've done multi-year funding for that equipment, but I don't recall that from last year.
So how does that budget look for a new engine? Are we moving in that direction, or?
I have to, I don't recall everything that's in Stephanie's budget, the community development budget currently.
Okay.
I don't believe that there's anything in there for 2020, and I don't know that Todd approached Stephanie during her budget preparation for that, but that might be something they're looking at starting in 2021, and perhaps we can supplement it with Act 13.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Pelizai?
One simple question. In past, I know that our professional firemen have done some training with volunteer companies, because it was expressed that if the fire is a really tough fire, excuse me, that our firemen are so professional in knowing what to do, and sometimes the volunteers do not know what to do. And do we still help with the training with volunteer fire companies?
Yes. We all speak the same language. It's probably, it's how we march. So, the training to continue to happen, in fact, next week, we have a joint training exercise with our surrounding first or second alarm companies, which include Old Lake Coming, South Venetia, Sporeham, and Torresville. We are continually training, not just in the Bureau of Fire, but offering training at either Kafka grounds or everywhere else we go in the city with occupied structures. They're always invited in, as we are invited out, to the other boroughs and municipalities around us, and we take advantage of those all the time. It's getting tougher and tougher to see everybody out, people with work schedules, you don't see the daylight trainings like we used to. You always had that cachet of older guys that were in the volunteer service that were home during the day. They're not there anymore. They've kind of aged out a little bit, and it's getting tougher. It's, again, it's a, it's a real time's coming.
I know it was a danger, there were many times that you talked about the danger of that process of a volunteer and a professional.
Yes.
Continue to do that training, I think that's really important.
We, trying to think what's coming up here. Between our departments training along with them alone, and educating everybody, and educating ourselves with our own new people, this is going to take a little longer than we probably shot for. Getting instructors is even harder right now for certain classes that we're moving forward. State offers all these classes, but when you go try to find one instructor for the whole state, it's hard to schedule him in, if you even get him. So, we're going to have some challenges in 2020, but we're going to already, we're going to overcome them all. I guarantee you, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Heckman.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
And next up, we have environmental control and codes, which is pages forty-five and And we welcome Mr. Girardi tonight.
Good evening, President Allison, all members of council. Okay. What you have before you is the Department of Public Safety and Environmental Control budget for 2020, starting out with personnel services, which includes salaries, overtime, FICA, life insurance, workers' comp, pension, and health insurance, for a total of $801,966. Continuing on, purchases of services, which include office rental, contract services, health officer subscriptions and dues, training, clean and seal, and a new line item, emergency demolition, for a subtotal of $81,700. Supplies and materials, general office supplies, which include, excuse me, general office supplies, uniform allowance, gas and oil, other supplies and support equipment, for a total of $32,000. On page forty-six, you have equipment repairs, which include the vehicle repairs and vehicles. Total would be $4,500. Then our last category is grants and gifts, which include the zoning hearing board, Housing Board of Appeals, Board of Health, and Plumbing Examining Board, for a total of $10,400, for a grand total for the Code, Bureau of Codes Department of $930,566. Now, I'm more happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Questions tonight? Mr. Henderson?
Can you just explain a little bit about the emergency demolition line item for us?
Yes. When this started out, the clean and seal twelve years ago, there was an amount of $10,000 that was put into my budget. And over time, with the help of Mr. Williamson, Mr. Hall, some of the members of council, and the mayor, we ended up bumping that up to about $30,000, okay? Which we would use for cleaning up properties, grass, debris, garbage, and so forth, from vacant properties. Owners do no longer live in there, and they just leave their house alone. Well, we ended up tending to tear a home down once in a while. In order to do that, I need money to do that, which would be, I would say, once every two, two and a half years, we tend to tear a house down, because it gets to that point on the blighted list. So that's the reason why I had an emergency fund in there, because over the years, since about five years ago, with budget restraints, my numbers are getting lower. So at this point, I can only use it really for clean and seal. If an emergency comes up and I got to tear a building down, I have to come back to council or to the Finance Department to request monies that we don't have in that budget. So that was the purpose of putting that in there.
Did we used to get that from CDVG?
We do. We still do. Every year, we get enough money to tear a home down, and it has to go through SPO, which is the federal agency, and they give us X amount of money. We lean that property, and that lean stays on that property. If ever gets paid, it goes back to the federal government.
Yeah. So this gives us the ability to do another, to share another...
Correct. The difference is with SPO, I have to have a building condemned for over a year.
I see.
And it has to have certain conditions to meet, where emergency demo is a building that's probably in poor shape, but all of a sudden, now, all of a sudden, the foundation wall's starting to kick out a little bit, and I have to do something with it ASAP. I get hold of the fire department, we go out and make a determination of the building, if it's structurally sound at that point, if we feel it needs to come down, then we'll order that demolition. So that's the purpose of the emergency demolition money.
Gives you more freedom.
Correct.
To do what needs to be done.
Right. What give you, for instance, blighted properties, back in '08, there was 188 of them. We're down to 24, but because of that, the clean and seal properties that we have to maintain to make them look good has grown. So, when we first started out, we leaned probably four properties. Last year, we leaned 76 properties. So it's a big difference.
Yeah.
In order to make your neighborhoods look good, make the property values look good, I can't let grass go six, seven feet. I can't let garbage pile up on the properties. Once you get like three or four feet of grass, the next thing happens, you get the tires thrown in and the garbage, because it's all hidden. So it ends up, you know, so we basically have a grass maintenance program in the city that's funded by the city.
Yeah. Now, I know, I sit on the blighted property, and we've talked about this from time to time. The redevelopment authority, obviously, the money has dried up for that, that was there in the past. Would that be an avenue to take care of these properties if we were to find money for the redevelopment authority?
Absolutely. The purpose of the Blighted Property Review Board is to take these 20 properties or 24 properties that we have, get them out of the hands of the person who owns it or has neglected it, get it into a developer's hand for him to renovate, fix it, and then put it back on the market. But what I need for that to happen is money, and that's the reason why our Blighted Property Review Board doesn't really meet that often, because there's really nothing for them to do, because we don't have the funds available for them to take action on something.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I just wanted to talk about that a little bit, because I know that's a tool that we have, but we can't use.
Correct.
And that would be, I think, really helpful. I mean, how many properties, you said, this year that we have leans on?
We have 76 properties we placed leans on just this year.
Just this year?
Yes.
And there's not much we can do with them?
And that's about $14,000 that we took out of the clean and seal that we use for those properties.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you.
The questions?
That was easy. Are you sure? Thank you very much.
Now that you asked about it, I should ask, what's in the support equipment line item, Joe?
What's that again?
What's in the support equipment line item? Your, the support equipment line item? Nineteen thousand this year.
Okay, yes.
It just references make codes officers more independent, accessible while out in inspections. So I was wondering exactly what that meant.
The support equipment, the nineteen thousand, it's up from last year, I believe?
Oh, it's barely up, but I was curious as to what the independent, accessible codes officers thing meant. In your, in the budget description, it says provides additional funds for equipment needs to make codes officers more independent.
What we're looking to do, like the police have and the fire have, we're looking for iPads and tablets, okay? I'm not a professional when it comes to that. I leave that up to our IT person. But it's nice when we go into the field, if I'm going, one of my officers in the field goes up to the property, and there's work being done, the first thing he has to do is call back, talk to Robin or whoever the clerk is, and say, okay, I'm looking at this property. Here's the address. What's going on with it? Then we're going to find out, okay, it's a rental property, it has maybe not, has been inspected. There's a complaint from another officer that's working on the matter, okay? It saves them time in the field. They can just go ahead and get into the computer, bring all that information up, and have all that record in front of them. We don't have that ability at this point. It's also good for overtime, because on the weekends, I can bring that tablet home. Fire department calls me, or the police department calls, and they want to say, hey, listen, I need a contact person for this property. Well, this last year, I would have had to call an officer in, or I would have had to come down to the office, go into the computer, bring that information up for him, and then all of a sudden, I'm paying somebody four and a half hours, a time for an hour's worth of work. So that's really, it does its cost savings, plus it gets a little more efficient in our department.
Got it. And we still don't, that makes perfect sense, and that sounds like a great idea. And frankly, I'm a little surprised you guys don't have that capability already. But we still don't have, because I know when we initially purchased Spillman, we talked about integrating it with the codes department so that the police could look up all that information by themselves without needing to consult the codes department, period. But that's.
No, you're talking about the Spillman system, and when we got involved with that when it first came out, there were some promises that they thought they could make to the codes department that we can interact with, and the problem is, their system is basically designed specifically for the police department, and it's not really designed for a codes department to merge with them. So we have our own system, which is GeoPlan, which is, that's our Geo-based system.
Got it. But I guess there isn't, and this is maybe is a long-term or better question for the IT guy, but there isn't a way to somehow merge at least the basic information that an officer, the fire, a fireman or a.
We have tried that. We did talk to them about that, and it didn't seem like it was cost-effective to do that.
Got it. Okay, because that still seems like awfully long for them to call you on your cell phone and wait for you to get out your tablet and load up the information when it should simply be available to them at their finger, even if they simply, you know, have that, have the same app you'll be using on your tablet on their computer. That might, long-term, be a much more efficient way than having to bug any of you guys, but.
We did try that. We were, we did look at that several years back when the Spillman system came in, that we were trying to get something that we could integrate all three departments, the fire, actually, four, in streets and parks. So we all have the same information, we're all looking at the same information.
But, well, maybe at some point, we can achieve it here. Thanks very much, Joe, for clarifying. I'm excited about the iPads and the tablets for you guys.
Mr. Pelosi?
Give me time to think of a couple of questions for you. Just two easy ones. One, how many codes and officers do we currently have?
We have a total of eight full-time employees and one part-time employees. We have a code administrator, we have a zoning administrator, we have four codes officers, office manager, a city clerk, or, excuse me, a receptionist clerk, and then we also have a part-time street excavation inspector, and he's in charge of all the gas cuts, water cuts, and so forth throughout the city. And he works out of my department.
The second question I had is, is there something on paper that describes and identifies what constitutes as a blighted property?
Yes. I'd be more than happy to get you that information. There is, it's actually in the Bladed Property Review Board Committee. It sets up what they are, but I'm more than happy to do that. Also, in the International Property Maintenance Code, it defines what a blade is. Okay, I'm more than happy to get that information to all council members.
Mrs. Katz?
Joe, with Dave Columbine, he's supposed to be working part-time, but we all know that his hours are four or more than part-time hours. Is that incorporated into your budget?
Yes. He works part-time, but he does work more than what's usually done on a week's basis. There is a lot of stuff that Dave's involved with, then he has to coordinate, of course, with Adam and our engineer, because of the streets are being cut, is it a mill and overlay of half width, full width, is it the whole street? He has to go out and verify all that information. So he does work a lot of hours.
We've always been concerned, because being a part-time employee, he's not working part-time hours. He's more of a full-time.
Right, and we tried, I believe, Joe, if I'm correct, we tried to accomplish that with his wage, as far as the hours he can put in?
There is a public salary detail for that position.
Right.
But he is classified as part-time.
Correct.
And we know that his hours far exceed part-time hours.
I don't oversee his work, so I can't answer that question.
What was the question again? Then I didn't.
We know that he works more than part-time hours.
Correct, correct. And I don't believe he could get his work done if he just did it on a twenty-hour work week.
This is what I'm going to ask. Why is he listed as part-time instead of full-time?
It was just the way we hired it as a part-time job, I thought, in the very, I think we thought in the very beginning that it wasn't going to be so demanding. It ended up being very demanding since we changed the ordinance after he got hired, but then we turned around and modified the ordinance, which is basically saying now, it's just not a cut and patch. It's talking whole, full lane width, so he's inspecting a lot more than when he was originally hired to come in. There was a change in the ordinance. If you remember, Bill Wright, John Grado brought the new ordinance in front of him. Yes, he doesn't, he's not a full-time person. He's another one.
So bizarre, because he is working.
But he is working full-time. I know, it's kind of funny, but he does put a lot of hours in, yes, yes.
Mr. Novio?
I just want to quickly add to that. With Dave's work, we found that the communication between the city and the utilities that he works with specifically has really gotten a lot better over the last several years. He's in more than routine contact, as we said, he goes beyond his part-time hours to do that on behalf of the city. So, you know, I think he deserves some respect for that, and certainly, any way we can compensate him, I think is more than overdue. But he has done more than just going out and inspecting streets for us.
That's correct.
The public should know that. Thank you, Joe.
Anyone else? I just have one observation on what you said about technology and the lack of having it. I think it just, it's a recurring theme that's been coming up throughout the budget. I think it really speaks to the, to our need that has been there, to have a strategic plan, and part of that being addressing technology needs across all our departments in city government. Because we need a plan, and I have no doubt we're going to be doing that in 2020, begin that process. So I'm looking forward to that, be much more efficient, and we'll get more done in a quicker amount of time.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi.
Thank you.
And that concludes the Department of Public Safety review, and now we'll move on to recreation. And that's pages twenty-nine through thirty-one. And we welcome Mr. Washington and Mr. Pavlok.
Good evening, council members and council members-elect. For those of you who do not know who I am, my name is Sean Washington, and I am the new Recreation Director for the city. I will be having Joe Pavlok do my presentation for this evening. I think it would be very foolish on my part, since I have less than five months of experience in this department. And so I just want to say thank you to Joe Pavlok for taking his time to help me and assist me through this process of explaining the 2020 budget for my department. So thank you, Joe Pavlok.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Starting on page twenty-nine, under Recreation Administration, for personnel services, which includes salaries, FICA, life insurance, workers' comp, pensions, and health insurance, total budget for 2020 of ninety-two thousand forty-nine dollars. This group does contain, again, a position of a Recreation Director with a part-time assistant, as has been budgeted in the past. For supplies and materials, which include general office supplies, equipment and software, gas and oil, and vehicle repairs, both of the latter two, which have no budget for 2020, have a subtotal of eight thousand dollars. For purchase of services, which includes advertising, subscription and dues, office rental, training, and communications, there's a subtotal of fourteen thousand fifty dollars, for a total proposed 2020 budget of one hundred fourteen thousand ninety-nine dollars.
Are there questions on page twenty-nine? Mr. Mackey?
If I'm looking at this right, have we only used two hundred and seventy-seven dollars of the twenty-five-hundred-dollar budget for advertising? And if that's the case, why are we asking for five thousand in the 2020?
There's been goals over the last couple of years, and I believe it's the current Recreation Director's desire to bring back the right, or, um, recreation reader. So that's an annual public, or a summer publication, which goes through all the various activities that the city provides, along with other recreational programs provided over the summer months. They're looking at media such as the Web Weekly or other electronic means for distributing the publication, but their, the desire is there to bring that back, and potentially, I know in the past, there's been discussion about even a smaller version for the winter activities. So if funds would be available, I think that they'd look at that option also.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Novio?
I'm just curious on that subject. Isn't that something we can do on the city's website?
That could be a means of distribution, correct. I know in the past, there was a mailing. We did the group postage rate to get it out to the community. I think that there's been talk, I think Mr. Nichols has indicated, that through the Web Weekly, there's a wider distribution group. And I don't know the cost difference between the group postage versus what the Web Weekly would charge, perhaps even the Sun Gazette, but through those media agencies, trying to get it out to a wider group. But again, yes, the city's website would be a good form of distribution for that. Along with, in the equipment software line item, we did purchase, I believe in 2018, the recreation software. So if there are individuals registered with that software, it's my understanding that they could do email blast for that and other events.
Thank you.
Ms. Mealy?
Just a handful of observations. I don't know that print is necessarily the wisest, and certainly not the most cost-effective route for publicizing, especially when we're looking at recreation programming. The majority of it is geared toward younger people, parents and young children, at least as it is right now. Not that, not that it wouldn't be lovely to see that change, and perhaps incorporate activities for older individuals in the city as well, but most of our programming doesn't currently. Most of those people are more likely, I think, to find any of that information on Facebook, perhaps on our website, than they are to see it in the Web Weekly or the Sun Gazette. And those are completely free avenues for publication. If we did want to go the route of advertising of some sort, it would seem as though we'd be wiser to go through northcentralpa.com, perhaps the Sun Gazette's website, something like that, something that's not behind a paywall, though. But, you know, I think that's a much wider avenue of distribution for a much, much lower cost. And the graphic design element is nearly nil when you're working with an online, nil or something we could do in-house if you're working with an online source.
And I wouldn't disagree with that. Also included in the advertising publications are card racks, for instance, for the summer concert series. You'll see that at the entrance, there's cards for the winter festivities. So there are other things that do need printed, and I think that there still would be some print cost, potentially for the older generation that may not be on the social media, as you previously indicated. But again, that is also a good idea, and I'm sure one that the rec director will take into consideration.
Yeah, I would say my understanding is something like seventy-five to eighty percent of Lycoming County is on Facebook at this point. My mom is not included in that number, but she lives in Muncie.
My mother either, so.
But, and I don't even know if I'm included in that number, but still. Anyway, for what it's worth, that clearly is a good way of reaching the majority of the population at this point. Mrs. Fazan, I'm sorry, I can yield the floor.
I think that it would be a really good idea to go through the schools, kids that use that whole process, even flyers that would go home once in a while through the schools. I'm sure they would allow that to happen. And I help pack bags for kids for lunches every Thursday, and I think that that'd be a great place to put a kind of a flyer about what's going on, too, because they just go home every Thursday and throughout the whole district, and it'd be a great way to advertise what's happening, especially at the primary level and the intermediate level. Forget middle school and high school, but I think the primary and intermediate.
Yeah, just forget all those.
Well, they're online, but the little kids are not online.
Mrs. Katz?
Change the subject. Could you please explain the health insurance?
The previous holder of the Recreation Director spot took family coverage. The proposed 2020 budget proposes a waiver of the coverage, so that is the funding for the waiver.
So he's not taking medical insurance, he's taking.
That is, has its currently proposed, yes.
Go back to information. I do know that RBT takes records and all of us. And that could help, too.
And there's potential partnerships with other organizations to promote the activities, but that was the initial proposal, and if it veers off to a different course with electronic media and other sources, that's, you know, helpful to.
Sometimes, sometimes we just are so corrupt that you don't know if they're getting into the homes that should be, they should be getting into. Seventy-year-olds, so therefore, you know, the mailing list can be very, like I say, corrupted. So therefore, it's difficult to do mailings like that and really get the benefit out of it. Therefore, that's a huge expense, where you could be using so many, social media in other areas. So I would disagree with this. I really would with the.
Okay. So it sounds to me that you are more in favor of information to be distributed via the internet versus physical copies of information going out?
The other thing that you can do with, you can put the schedule in, say, Web Weekly or North Central. They would put the schedule up of what's going on, and it would be far cheaper than what a mailing would be. It might hit more of the people that you want it to hit, instead of so many homes that aren't going to benefit from it.
Yeah, I would think going forward into next year, that early, excuse me, early next year, that would be a discussion that would be within the administration to discuss that and see.
And perhaps there's a compromise there, a hybrid approach where, you know, you do a small print ad or a quarter-page print ad in one of the newspapers, both the newspapers, and refer them to your social media link. So there are opportunities out there. As you're saying, I think that it's up for the next administration to lead the direction on that. But it was currently proposed to potentially bring back that recreation guide and look at some electronic along with some print.
Right.
Pieces.
Yeah, it's good to prepare for. Mr. Pavlok, could you give me the breakdown of the salary line?
That's shown in the salary detail, in the salary detail tab.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is.
On page three. At the very top, there's one full-time proposed Recreation Director with a part-time proposed secretary or assistant.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Hearing none. Oh, Ms. Mealy?
Just a quick question about the part-time proposed Secretary or Assistant. Are we proposing to continue in the same vein that we've sort of run through this year with, I think, Kayla in the office, or is that relationship ending? Are we looking to make a new hire?
I, I think that that's up in the air at this point. Again, the new administration's going to have to make a decision as to how they want to proceed. The funding that's in there is a little bit higher than it was here in 2019. So there's still the potential to, to look at an AmeriCorps position or potentially, depending on the hours and, and the needs throughout the different seasons. To, to utilize that in different, a different fashion versus a consistent, week-to-week consistent number.
Yes, I think that's clearly what, what's sort of needed in the department, so, thanks.
Are we ready for page 30 then?
For the recreation program on page 30, Personnel Services, which includes seasonal salaries, FICA and workers' comp, 2020 proposal of $37,100. Under Purchase of Services, which includes electric, Bowman Field Supplies, the James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant Program, Program Supplies, Transportation, Maintenance, Concerts in the Park and Special Events for a subtotal of $43,700. And then a new account for 2020 proposed under Other Expenditures is Facility Maintenance in the amount of $7,500 for a total department budget of $88,300.
Questions? Oh, Ms. Mealy?
Just a quick, my understanding, unless this problem was ameliorated last season at some point, is that we've had continuing difficulties finding consistent staffing, both in the pools and in the recreation program. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
And my further understanding would be that it might be related to the income level that we're offering in those positions. I, I guess I'm simply asking, I, I, I don't necessarily want to see this budget increase at all, but I would like to see us have consistent staffing in our pools, not have to close our pools because we don't have enough staff on hand, not have to, you know, curtail the recreation program because we can't manage to get counselors to show up. Have we considered that when we look at maintaining the same budget?
I think when you look at the salaries, the salaries are budgeted or have been budgeted consistently at the past for a full season operating. As you're aware, it's an outdoor program that we operate here, and obviously the pool's an outdoor program. So there are days where rain will shut down the activities. So you will see days that individuals aren't working. I think that that's another issue that a student can go get a job at a convenience store, grocery store, and they can work a consistent schedule. However, they're scheduled for five days a week at the city. However, we may be shut down on Wednesday and Friday because of rain. So there, there's a little frustration where they're expecting to get five hour, or five days a week, but we'll only pull in three because of rain events. I know that in the pool program, I don't know if it was the past year or prior year to that, Ms. Novinger was having issues getting guards, and I believe she increased the rate to be slightly higher than the neighboring pools to try to draw people in. That did work, but I think the second year kind of backfired because then they came back and matched us. So it might be something that we have to look at, but I think that with those rain dates, there's room to look at the salary structure. To get people to come back, we also do offer, and it's going to sound small, but it's a quarter an hour increase. So if you start your first year at your starting rate, and then you decide to come back to the program in the second year, you're not just staying at the consistent rate or the, the rate for that position, you're moving up a quarter. So you're, you're cycling through and, you know, increasing a little bit each year.
Yeah.
But again, there's a lot of obstacles with an outdoor summer program.
Right, yeah, no, I, I, I think we just need to put some thought before we get off the ground with next year's program into maybe a little better employee retention strategy. I'm not, I'm not quite sure what it looks like, but, but, you know, I, I think it's an embarrassment for the, for the, for the city and for the, for the programming, of course, if we have to, for some reason, you know, shut down a, a chunk of the pool or, or shut, you know, that, that's simply, and, you know, a, a difficulty. I'm not certain that it's, that it's happened, but, you know, if, if we're shutting down camps or something like that because we have counselors who don't show up, that of course provides a lot of issues for parents who are expecting that to be in place.
And I don't, I don't expect, I don't under, it's not my understanding that that has happened. I knew we do shut down, from the pools perspective, there are shutdowns later in the season.
Yeah.
As your college students start going back and, and getting back in the groove at their campuses, and then fall sports season, practice begins. It just becomes tougher and tougher to maintain the, the level of staffing that we need at that facility. So.
Got it.
That's, that's been a consistent pattern that we've been shutting down right around the little league time.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's try and brainstorm here before the season starts about things we might be able to do to, to, to retain staffing there. And, and likewise, for parents in terms of our recreation programming, it might be wise for us to see if we could figure out an indoor strategy or something like that. Then you, you don't have staff that gets sent home two days a week unexpectedly, and you don't have parents scrambling to find childcare when they expected to have it on Wednesday and Friday and it's raining. I know that we have a couple of pool houses that aren't being used either because there's no longer a pool or because we're shutting down the pool for, you know, maybe, maybe we can figure out something that, that allows us to, to continue to, to hold those programs indoors.
That'd be something to explore. I know the mayor, Mayor Campana did have some ideas or thoughts about transitioning the East End Pool House, as you mentioned, pool houses. I'm not sure with the two parks that are operational, Memorial and Brandon, if that be a logistical option.
Yeah, issue.
But again, those thoughts have been considered, and where we can, can move from that to try to, to have a full five-day program, rain or shine, would.
Yeah.
Be something to work towards.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mrs. Katz.
In your parks programs, how many parks? Are you just going to do Brandon and Memorial Park, or is it going to be just one park?
The proposal is for two parks.
It is for two parks.
Again, in 2020, Brandon and Memorial.
And are we still utilizing RVT to do the pool?
Yeah, that.
From Brandon? I'm just, you know.
That's the transportation line item.
That's, I want, yes.
Under Purchase of Services, and that number would cover one full season with no rain dates, 10 weeks, five days a week, transportation to and from Brandon to the Memorial Park pool.
No, I've always said every year, I would like to see the parks programs extended into other parks for the kids in other neighborhoods, and I never see that we get it together to do that. And, and hearing that we have, it's a hard enough time finding people to work these programs, it's just very discouraging for, for the kids when you're trying to get the kids outdoors, to enjoy the outdoors and play and do other outdoor events. And it's just, it is discouraging to me that every year we, we don't accomplish what I would like to see accomplished.
It's also a revenue to expense consideration. The revenue that we're bringing in from these programs is not supporting the full cost of, so we're supplementing, and we knew bringing them back in-house that that would happen. It's just a matter of how much do we want to supplement opening exist, or additional programs.
If you look at some of the neighborhoods, though, and where some of the parks are, where there are some disadvantaged kids that really, it's, it's difficult, it would be difficult for them to get to either Memorial or Brandon at times. And I, that's, that's the, the group of kids that I see that could probably benefit from a, a good parks program, you know, hopefully not all, but eventually we can expand into those areas.
Mr. Henderson.
Could you explain the difference between your new Facility Maintenance line item under Other Expenditures and the Supplies and Maintenance under Purchase of Services?
The Facility Maintenance under Other Expenditures is intended to be more capital-type items. For instance, we could bring in a Playground Inspector to go in and look at the various playground facilities to make sure that there's no major improvements needed. And if they are identified, we could use some funding from there to make those improvements if it's something that our staff can't tackle. The Other Supplies and Maintenance is more of your smaller items. It's replacement of picnic tables, more mulch, nets, swings, just smaller scale items.
Okay.
That was an item that was proposed in 2019, but I think was removed from the, the final budget, but we're, we're trying to get it in there. I think it's something, I think Adam would agree. And in, from my stamp, standpoint, from a liability aspect, that we'd want to make sure that we're keeping the playground structures.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm totally in favor of that. I just wondered what the difference between the two was and why maybe we didn't just increase the Supplies and Maintenance line item for that.
I think we were trying to separate between more small-scale items and more capital-type
Sure.
items, bigger-scale items.
Would you remind me also about what the Bowman Field Supplies is?
We've been keeping that in the budget. It hasn't been utilized in the last three or four years, but would be utilized if we would need to perform the maintenance for the spring baseball games at Bowman Field.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We've been lucky enough that those costs have been covered for the past few years, but if that relationship would end, which we don't expect it at this point, but if it would, we'd have money set aside to support that.
I couldn't remember. I thank you for reminding me of that. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Mealy?
So just to be clear, the Facility Maintenance line item, it sounds like some of that is some, is, is, are activities that we could perform in-house if we had someone with the proper certifications. Is that accurate?
The inspection of the facilities, however, if you need to get additional parts or things of that nature, that would come from this also.
Got it.
If you would need to replace a bar on the monkey bars.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's stuff of that nature, you know, you know, those bigger-scale items. Yes, if we had a certified inspector, they'd be able to go through and identify those issues. And I think that it's the intent that we would send someone to get that certification in the next year. That's my understanding.
I was going to say, it seems like that's something that we should absolutely have in the city. You know, there's, we, there, it's silly that we, that something like that would only happen once a year, for one thing.
Correct.
You know, we should be constantly keeping an eye on whether or not our chains are deteriorating, whether or not the monkey bars.
And the budget previously discussed, there is a Training Line item which could support getting that certification.
Good. That's everything.
All right, Mr. Henderson.
Following up on that, again, would, how does, how does the Streets and Parks budget interact with that as far as the Facility Maintenance and that kind of thing? Because they're both sort of the same, you know, umbrella there, I guess.
I want to think that the Streets and Parks, the Public Works budget maintains more of the buildings and structures that are on the city grounds. This one is more of the equipment, benches, the, the smaller scale.
Mm-hmm.
Or, smaller scale plus the, the major playground facilities.
And in the past, because we haven't had this line item, those smaller-scale things were taken care of by the Streets and Parks budget, or?
They've been absorbed, I believe, through the Facility Maintenance Accounts, or Account in the, the Streets Department.
Yeah. So adding this here would, would also relieve some pressure from our Streets and Parks Department.
And give some needed attention to other facilities.
Yes. Thank you.
I just have one question. The Special Events Budget, how much of that is advertising? Do we have a estimate on that?
I, off the top of my head, don't know. Shy on guessing, but you don't have that on the top?
I do not have that.
We can get that for tomorrow night.
Okay, great.
Do a breakdown of that for advertising.
So we know, like, what the total advertising budget is for the? Okay, I guess we're ready for page 31.
I just wanted to backtrack a little bit about the park inspection. It is in talks that I myself would take a training course in order to be the official Inspector for the parks.
Is there an associated cost with that training? And where's that budgeted?
There is. At the top of my head, I do not know what the cost of it is, but it would come out of the Training Line Item.
There's a Training Line up in the previously discussed budget on page 29. I think there's $1,700 proposed there.
Okay.
So that would cover the cost of the course, which was, did you say 600? And I believe it's a multi-day program, so if there is lodging cost.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? All right, we're ready for page 31.
Page 31 is the Swimming Pool Program. For Personnel Services, again, seasonal salaries, FICA and workers' comp for a total of $55,800. And under Purchase of Services, electric, pool supplies, bathhouse supplies, pool preparation, pool equipment repairs, bathhouse equipment repairs, water, equipment and chemicals for a subtotal of $44,200 for a total department budget of $100,000.
Questions? See none, apparently.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Washington, thank you. Mr. Pavlov. We'll move on to General Government, and up first is City Council, and that is page 14. I guess I'll do it.
I was going to say, who's in charge of that one? Do I have to do it? I'm looking at it.
I'll do it, but you can't ask me any questions. We can just, we can just go down. And if we have any questions, watch.
No, rest your legs, Joe. We've got more planned for you later. Randy?
Yeah. Are we ready? Okay. The City Council Budget, Personnel Services, salaries are $21,750. FICA is $1,700. Life insurance is $1,200. Pensions are $35,400. And health insurance is $170,000 for a total of $230,050. Purchase of Services, Office Rental is $18,800. Supplies and Materials, general office supplies are 600, and equipment is zero for a $600 total there. Other expenditures are $1,000. Contract services are zero. Training, $150. Legislative contingency is $175,000. And for a total of $176,000, $176,150 for other expenditures, and the total department expense of $425,000, $425,600.
Read like a professional, Randy.
Hardly. But in any case, Mr. Henderson.
I know this year, we passed an ordinance requiring council members to. I know this year we passed an ordinance requiring council members to pay into their health insurance five percent. Is that figured into this?
That's what I wonder. Is it, Mr. Pavlov?
It's incorporated into the budget on page nine, Health Insurance and Clearly Contributions.
Okay, so it's a...
We recognize the contributions received separately from the premiums paid.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is that the City Council total, then?
That is for all departments.
All departments. So, we don't have a breakout for...
Right. So, that what that means is, we're obviously paying the same amount out of the city coffers for the insurance, however, we're gaining more income through the, through that.
The groups that are covered in there are the at-will employees, both AFSMI groups and City Council, and other elected officials.
Mrs. Fosnot.
Equipment, I'm going to bring with me, I was, I should have brought it tonight. For the past four and a half months that I've been here, I have a stack of paper that's about this big. That's four and a half months that I've been here. That's a lot of printing, it's a lot of paper, it's a lot of machine use. I cannot imagine what the rest of you, well, I can, because I have four years of it, but the amount of paper and ink and whatever we need put in there, equipment, laptops, everyone needs to have, I mean, that's just this generation. That's, this generation is the future. It's not what the paper was that I have accumulated in six months. It's kind of ridiculous. So, I really think there needs to be a fifteen thousand dollar price tag put in there for equipment for City Council. It just makes sense.
There was initially.
Oh, okay.
It was removed before the budget was presented to us, but that was the intention, because that was our request, and to, and that would not pay for all of it, but that was the beginning of a fund to do that. Ms. Mealy.
And I think we're looking at multiple places where the Fire Department is getting tablets to avoid carrying reams of paper around, like the Codes Department is getting tablets to save money in terms of both overtime and staff time in office. And I think that an investment like that, while it's a bit of an upfront cost, is a money saver as well, because to the extent that City Hall is digital, we are not spending money on office supplies. And we spend, oh, I think I looked it up, I think I added it all up last year, something on the order of fifty-seven thousand dollars a year on just paper and office supplies. And if we can eliminate that, and that might be low, honestly, Joe, I can't remember what the number was when I added it up across every department. If we can eliminate that with the, and eliminate the concurrent waste, the, you know, the need to recycle, the, right, 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 you know, we could, we can save ourselves a lot of headaches, improve our, you know, our storage and utilize storage space better in the sense that it will be on servers instead of in massive rooms in the basement. And generally speaking, I think, just, just improve the quality of life and workflow around here. So, I would concur, Mrs. Fosnot, that that is something that we need to be building into, not just the Codes Budget, not just the Fire Department Budget, but also the budget for City Council and for all departments moving forward. And our IT Director over there is saying, it sounds like so much work in the upcoming year, but exciting, and good job, Security.
It will be difficult for Mrs. Fosnot to give up her pen, to be able to circle and write and make notes, because I'm not sure how to do that with a laptop, but this generation, that's what they use. They don't use the pen.
We're closing in on the, ending the second decade in the twenty-first century. We, we're not even twentieth century, and in a lot of things, a good portion of government is the flow of information back and forth, and it, the more accurate it is, and the more timely it is, the more effective government is. And it just, there's a crying need for this to be accomplished across the board, in every department. Every department needs an assessment, so hopefully, we're going to launch into that starting next year. I mean, continue to.
Exactly. And we're approaching the point where we will soon be electing to City Council. If we, if we haven't already, I can't speak for some of my, for some of our new council members, or council members-elect, where we will soon be electing people who have literally never known life without a smartphone. And to expect those people to, to, you know, accrue reams of paper and search through them for handheld notes, or for hand-jotted notes is, I think, is a mistake on a number of levels. Yeah. If I could make one further point.
Certainly.
Just for an interesting observation about increasing city costs, and some costs which don't increase. Anyone looking at this budget might marvel or wonder at the fact that the City Council Salary Line Item is one-eighth of our health insurance line item. And, and so, I'll point out, as we point out every year, that that, that Salary Line Item has actually not increased, I believe, since nineteen seventy-two. But that expenses across the city, and we do talk about this every year, but we haven't talked a lot about it yet this year. Our health insurance premiums went up five percent this year. As a rule, salaries across the board, with a handful of exceptions, can be expected to go up about two-point-five percent a year for all city employees. That means an increasing cost every year within the city budget. And if we flip real quick to the second page of the miscellaneous segment, oh, excuse me, the first page of the miscellaneous segment, we can see that the assessed valuation of city real estate is dropping annually. That is in large part due to the fact that we have not reassessed in the county of Leighton since two thousand and four, I believe, Mr. Grimes. Right. And lacking a reassessment, the only thing that city real estate values can do is drop as people appeal the assessment of their properties that are overvalued, and no one, of course, steps forward to say, hey, excuse me, but my assessment should be higher. And the net effect of that is that the city's earnings on real estate are dropping, and the city budget is, as, as everything in the world does, merely increasing due to personnel costs and, and insurance costs that can never be expected to reduce. And, and so, we find ourselves, as we do every year, between a rock and a hard place. But, but I just wanted to point that out for the benefit of everyone in the midst of these discussions. And that is why we note that the health insurance budget for City Council increased from a hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars last year to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars this year, and why we can see corollary increases across almost every health insurance line item in the city's budget. And, and it bears some thought.
And if I might address a couple of things you said, do that one first. We did discuss last year, but in the context of all the things that have, the way things unfolded throughout this, this year, we didn't, weren't able to accomplish it, but we did talk about doing a study, comprehensive study of other communities in Pennsylvania that are similar to ours, and what salary and benefits they offer, and compiling those and comparing ours to theirs, and then coming up with an equitable solution to put us on an even footing. Obviously, when healthcare was offered to City Council members, it was a lot cheaper, and it was, I believe it was an effort to kind of sweeten the pot along with the salary. So, there may be a need for a change there in equilibrium. And the other thing, you brought up assessments and reassessments, and I think all reassessments are not equal and not the same, and it may be time for us to begin to look at not just simply getting it from the county and saying, oh, it's been approved, but giving it a hard look from our end legally, and seeing if there's any reason to challenge the reassessment. So, just a thought moving forward, because we want to be fair to everybody, and that means everybody gets equal treatment under the law. And if there are no more questions, we'll move on. And we will go to the City Clerk. City Clerk Personnel Services, twenty, twenty proposed are thirty-six thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars. FICA, two thousand eight hundred. Life insurance, two hundred seventy-five dollars. Workers' comp, fifty-five. Pensions, twenty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-four. Health insurance, ninety-six hundred dollars. And auto allowance, seven hundred dollars, for a total of seventy-one thousand nine hundred seven dollars. Purchase of Services, other service and document, IMA, two thousand seven hundred dollars. Advertising, seven thousand dollars. Codification of ordinances, three thousand five hundred dollars. Is that our final payment on that? Does anyone remember?
I, I don't know.
I should look at last year's.
Joe might know, but my thought is actually that we have paid for most, that this is...
Would this be?
The annually.
The annual fee?
Right.
Okay.
But I'm not positive.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, it was a two-year contract, and it was about seven, it was somewhere between seven and fifteen thousand a year. I can't remember for some reason which number it was.
Yeah.
But I don't think that would cover it one way or the other.
Yeah. Okay. We'll keep moving. Office rental, five thousand one hundred. Training, one hundred dollars, for a total of eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. General office supplies, one thousand one hundred dollars, for a total budget, a department expense of ninety-one thousand four hundred and seven dollars. Any questions or comments on that tonight, Council? Pretty standard. A slight increase, but not much. Okay, then we'll move on to Control, Bureau of Law, I'm sorry, and that will be on page seventeen.
Good evening, President Allison, members of Council, members-elect of Council. You have before you the budget for the Bureau of Law, also known as the Solicitor's Office, for legal services. The twenty-twenty proposed budget, seventy-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Subscription and dues, twelve hundred dollars. Lean filing, thirteen hundred dollars, for a subtotal of seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. For Supplies and Materials, general office supplies, two thousand dollars, for a subtotal of two thousand dollars. Purchase of Services, other professional services, twenty thousand dollars, for a total department expense of one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Thank you, Mr. White. Questions or comments from Council tonight? Mr. Henderson.
Last year, we added that to other professional services for the, I have written down the, updating the HR policies and manuals, specifically, just wondering how we are on that, and obviously, we've seen some transition through that time. But I know that's why we added that line item, and wondered if we were still on track with that.
We, we did, and, well, Joe, if you have something you wanted to...
They've been working on that, I think, that the focus this year has been with the Police Department.
And so, it's been mostly labor-focused and working on the labor.
And I think that it's going to be an ongoing, continuing thing, to continue on, and we're proposing to continue that relationship in the twenty-twenty proposal.
Okay. So, we can expect that pretty much from here on?
I guess it would be, on a basis that it's going to be a more occurring thing, the Assistant Solicitor's Office, or in relation to contract negotiations, things of that nature, so they have additional responsibilities that they hadn't had in the past, so I think it's better to keep that in consideration for more.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it's needed, you know, to keep an eye on these, these manuals and policies and procedures, and, you know, if we don't devote any resources to it, well, we're stuck with something really old that's... Anyway, I just wondered if, if that, that, I, obviously, because it's proposed, you're proposing that twenty thousand is, is an accurate number there, we don't need to change that at all?
No, I think that's, that's what we're, we, for the last few years, internal, our internal solicitors for legal matters, instead of using consultants, it saves us a lot of money. So, if our solicitor is able to provide those additional services, we can save a lot of money.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. White? Are you done? Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Controller's Office, and that is page fifty-one. Welcome, Mrs. Woodring.
Good evening, President Allison, members of Council, and citizens of Williamsburg. The proposed budget for the Controller's Office is as follows. Personnel Services, salaries, fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five, which include myself and a part-time deputy. FICA, life insurance, workers' comp, pensions, and health insurance, for a subtotal of one hundred and eleven thousand twenty-four dollars.
That's you.
Thank you.
Purchase of Services, which is auditing, office rental, and training, a subtotal of sixty-two thousand. Supplies and Materials, which include general office supplies, general office equipment, for a subtotal of one thousand two hundred dollars, and a total department expense of one hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Thank you, Mrs. Woodring. Are there questions from Council members? Mrs. Mealy?
Just one very small one that might be better directed to Mr. Pavlov. I know that the cost of the annual audit is spread out across a number of departments. What's the, what's the total cost of the audit between RVT, Finance?
I'd have to get that number. I think that for twenty-twenty, the proposed is in the eighty, around eighty thousand. I don't know that, so I will get that for you tomorrow night.
Thank you.
But we've recently received that engagement letter.
I noticed that it's slightly up from, or would appear to be slightly up.
The additional funding over the twenty-nineteen estimate, we try to keep some additional funds in there, in case there are special grant audits that need to be completed that aren't funded through the audit, or through the grant proceeds.
Got it.
So, we've always tried to keep a small amount from year to year, because you'll see it's down from the twenty-nineteen budget in twenty-nineteen, and again, setting some additional money aside.
Thank you.
Typically, a program audit's about five thousand dollars. For any particular area, you know, we have to file a report you have to have, but it blows out all of it, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the, the cost is what it is, there's not really any change in it. I was just curious to what extent it fluctuates annually and, right?
It wasn't that much.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mrs. Fosnot.
The auditing company that we're using, how long have we used that company?
Long time.
Long time.
They've changed names like three times in the course of our use of the company, just in my experience.
Have we ever looked at any other auditing firms we have?
Yeah, I believe five or so years ago, we did that, and we're coming about to the inclusion of that, so I think if, if the desire of the Controller's Office, that would be the direction to go. So I think if the desire of the Controller's Office, that would be the direction to go after this completion of the twenty nineteen audit.
I see no other questions, thank you, Mrs. Woodring.
You're welcome, thank you.
And next up is the Tax Collection Treasurer's Office, page fifty-three. Welcome, Mr. Grimes.
Thank you, good evening, President Allison, members of council and council-elect. For the twenty twenty Office of the Treasurer and Tax Collector budget under Personnel Services, which includes salary, part-time and related benefits, there's a total Personnel Services of two hundred and one thousand dollars. Purchase of Services, which include automation services, bonding premium, subscription and dues, travel and training, office rental and legal services, total of sixty thousand nine hundred dollars. Supplies and materials, which include general office supplies and equipment, subtotal of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for a total department expense of two hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mrs. Mealy.
Just two quick questions, the legal services line, I see we didn't use it this year. Do we anticipate with bringing the business privilege tax back in-house that we may have some need for legal services that we haven't in the past?
We will have to hold some money there for legal services, mainly if we would have an appeal or if we would need to litigate something for collections. We expected to use that budget a lot in our year prior to bringing the collections in-house, but with the delay of that, we were able to use a lot of that last year to update our ordinances and our rules and regulations and all those policies and procedures. That's why we didn't really have to use anything this year.
Okay, oh, good.
But next year, it would result in net collections, most likely, if we have to use those services.
Got it.
And there are some things that, with local businesses especially, will have a conflict of interest with our solicitors or if, you know, we have a hearing officer that needs to come in, we'll have expenses there.
Got it. And then the second question relates to the equipment line item, which I noticed we also didn't use a whole lot of this past year. Do we anticipate using more of the line item in twenty twenty as we transition? Or have we already purchased most of the equipment?
No, that line item will be used heavily in twenty twenty. We've had that in there for two years now as we've wanted to make this transition to bringing the business privilege tax, local service tax and mercantile tax in-house. Because of the state and the laws that they were looking to pass, we've held off on that. But really, that line item is mainly for our software, which we really have started the heavy work on this past month. For the data conversion, getting it ready, getting it on our servers, on our computer, training and then customization that we'll need throughout the next year.
Great, well, it's a really exciting transition and I'm glad that we're making it happen. But I'm just kind of curious where we're going to fall budgetarily. Sometimes you tend to see that you only use ten thousand bucks of a line item last year and you expect that's all you're going to use moving forward, so.
And that's why even bringing these extra collections in-house, the budget doesn't change too much outside of normal increases because we've really been preparing for this for two years and budgeting for it for two years, and now it's finally happening.
He's so excited.
I am. And the bonding premium is the other large increase, and that's something that used to be billed every other year. I have to be bonded for four years for the collections that happen in my office. The company has indicated that they will not split that into two installments anymore, that has to be paid all upfront. So for my next four-year term, it will be paid in the beginning of next year for all four years. So then the next three years will be a zero budget for that line item.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Other questions from council members tonight? You're just, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Grimes, and we appreciate the untold thousands of dollars that you've been able to find for us that were out there.
Thank you.
Oh.
Let's get those little machines out there too.
All right, I think you all got an update today on your desk, a memo explaining that tax a little bit and how it works.
Wonderful, wonderful. Every time I go out to eat, I mark where they are. I'll send you a note.
Next up is Information Technology, page thirty-eight. Welcome, Mr. Pavlock.
Thank you. For Information Technology, under Personnel Services, which includes salaries, FICA, life insurance, workers' comp, pension and health insurance, a subtotal of eighty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars. For Supplies and Materials, which includes Supplies and Communications, a total of twenty, two thousand eight hundred dollars. Under Equipment, Equipment and Software, thirty-one thousand dollars. And under Purchase of Services, including Contract Services, Web Hosting and Maintenance and Office Rentals, a subtotal of twenty-seven thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars for a total department expense of one hundred fifty thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlock. Questions or comments? I hear cricket, so.
Oh, my God.
We'll just.
Can I think of something?
That's okay, hurry up. Where's my timer? There's a lot of talk about technology tonight, so obviously this is going to be, see a lot of action in the future. Okay, thank you, Mr. Pavlock.
For page thirty-three, under the Budget and Fiscal Officer, Personnel Services, which includes Salaries, FICA, Life Insurance, Workers' Comp, Pensions and Health Insurance, a total of one hundred three thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars. Under Purchase of Services, Contract Services, Business and Grants Development, Subscription and Dues, Training and Office Rental for a subtotal of ninety-seven thousand six hundred and fifty. For a total department expense of two hundred one thousand three hundred thirteen dollars. Some new items included in the budget proposal for twenty twenty. Earlier in the night, Councilwoman Fosnot discussed the concern or the need of departments to go out and look for some grant funding, some, someone to assist with that or what departments are doing in regards to grant searches. Mr. Nichols wanted to put in a budget this year, a shared position with River Valley Transit and the Business and Grants Development, a line item of fifty thousand dollars, is a proposal for that consolidated position. And I believe it was discussed on Monday evening at the work session, the desire to put a lot of our professional services out for proposals. Send out RFPs for construction management, engineering, auditing, a number of others. So that's the related increase under the Contract Services line item proposal for twenty twenty.
Thank you. Any questions tonight? Mr. Henderson?
You mentioned the grants development there as a shared position. Are we talking one, one person that's doing, how's this work?
That would be my understanding, I'll let Mr. Nichols dive further.
Again, that's to be determined, that has to be, you know, obviously a discussion with the mayor-elect.
Sure.
The desire there, the thought process is that, and that was a common theme with all the department heads, that we can do a better job in terms of going after grants.
I agree, yeah.
And keep in mind, we eliminated the planning position a couple of years ago. We had a person in that department, so to speak, and so that a person no longer exists. So I think it's became evident that we probably need someone back that really focuses on grants. And also, keep in mind that our thought process was, we had two major studies that were ongoing this year and been completed, the Park Avenue Study, the Economic Development Market Analysis Study for East Third Street. And so that's provided results and recommendations. So we wanted to do something set aside where the mayor-elect could then, you know, have opportunity or resources to see where we want to go with that. As Joe alluded to, the RFP processes are not related to major contract services. And, you know, we just felt that, you know, instead of restoring a planning position, so to speak, we just thought we'd put a placeholder in this particular budget to let the mayor-elect, you know, think about his priorities in terms of how we'd like to proceed with that.
If this is a proposed shared position with RVT, is there also money then in the RVT budget for this position, this shared position?
Again, that has been fully developed.
Right, it's an idea, right, this is a placeholder.
Which is a placeholder, and, you know, we see planning grants ourselves, so, you know, again, it's just a thought that lots of opportunities out there. And so we wanted to make sure we had some resources set aside for the new administration to decide whether or not, how they want to proceed on that.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Are there none? Oh, there's one.
Maybe it's not a question for Joe, maybe it's just, I'd like to know the cost differential between leasing and purchasing those police cars. I'd like to know that for the meeting tomorrow. Ah, ha, I hand one up in the air. That's the, that's what it would cost to buy them?
That's the difference.
The difference.
Between the forty-one thousand and change that we'll spend on leasing them next year or the hundred and seventy-nine thousand or so that we would spend.
The budget line would need to be increased to around one ninety, one eighty, one ninety. I believe it's currently at sixty.
But over the long haul of leasing them for five years, I heard you, I sort of heard you talk to Ms. Mealy, sorry. And what would the difference be that it would cost us over leasing them for five years?
About seven thousand dollars more approximately per vehicle over the five years that we would spend.
Per vehicle?
Per vehicle, yeah, we're going to spend several amount more. And in this particular case, our finance director, our budget officer, Mr. Pavlock, all of us really were against the idea of leasing. However, at the end, and it's been the mayor's policy for a while, my understanding, not to lease. However, at the end, in an effort to reduce the tax burden, we decided this year anyway, in an effort to bring back officers, that we would choose this option. But it's not necessarily going to be our policy going forward. It was, it was an option this year to reduce costs at the six-figure level.
However, it would increase cost over a period of five years?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And I think that's sort of the key, you save money upfront, but it's going to cost a little bit more in the long run.
In the long run, correct.
But it should be a consistent policy and not go back and forth between purchasing and leasing.
And we've purchased and not leased as a practice, past practice.
So, you know. You know, I encouraged the chief to talk with the mayor-elect to establish, you know, a firm policy as it relates to that. Maybe have discussion Public Safety Committee because, sad to say, over the past several years, it's been all over the place. You know, some years we don't buy anything and then we get behind and then you want to lease to sort of save the money upfront on a one-year basis. But that's just a short-term gain, you know, in the long term, you're really going to, there's obviously cost when you lease. There's, you know, there's interest costs and that type of thing, so.
Thank you, and I'd also like to know, what percentage of the overall budget is salaries and benefits?
I have a spreadsheet for that, but I'll, I'll wait till we.
It's over eighty percent.
Ninety thou, ninety percent?
Over eighty percent.
Over eighty percent.
I want to say upper eighties, but I'll have that tomorrow.
I think that would be very helpful because it doesn't, people think, you know, oh, we have all this money. Well, when you take out salaries and benefits, there's not a whole lot left to do things with.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Mealy?
Yeah, I think that's a very valid point, there's very, very little discretionary spending in the city's budget. Most of that, of course, lies in vehicles and items like that. Just to further the conversation about leasing here for one more second, if we're looking at sixty thousand dollars this year to lease four vehicles and factoring in basically four vehicles annually that we would need to lease next year, that amount, that is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, this is a five-year lease program. The year after, it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The year after that, it's two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And before we retire these original leases, we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars a year for vehicles to simply continue on the leasing, on the annual leasing. And that's, that's of course presuming that vehicles don't go up in cost. But that is to say that in order to lower a line item for one year this year, we are in the final analysis dramatically increasing it in five years' time. Right. So unless my math's wrong on that, Mr. Pavlock, please correct me. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I just want to remind everybody, you received the financial plan a year ago and has all that employee information percentages and.
Yes.
How the budget breaks down and, you know, what things should be considered. And maybe the councilperson elect would be interested in getting a copy of that, it might be helpful. It's one year old, but it provides you, you know, all those pie charts and shows you what the costs are for different parts of city government and might be helpful to have review that because I think you'll see a lot of those questions will be answered by that document.
Perhaps they could get a digital copy, Mr. Nichols. I said perhaps they could get a digital copy.
Well, we did.
I have one.
Yeah, we do all have them, right.
In general, that information would be extremely helpful in future budget years as well as, we have talked about technology, having this in Excel format so we can go through that entirely. As well as having balance sheets for the entire city as a part of this and having it more than two weeks before it gets voted on.
Right.
Just a general observation for whoever's preparing this in the future.
I apologize for not thinking about that because that financial plan was a three-year document. It was supposed to be really, you know, a living document for not only this year, but the next two years. So we need to get you a copy of that, I didn't even think about that.
Mr. Henderson?
I was just going to mention that, but, yeah, we didn't see that this year. But, because that, like you said, an updated living document, three-year plan. And I suppose that'll come in the future here. Just want to jump back to the budget that we're looking at here on page thirty-three. And just to make a note, I know we talked about this the other night, but judging from the proposal that's here, we would have to make the assumption that it is the administration's perspective that we do not need Penn Strategies. Is that correct, that we don't need them in this coming year? Is it, okay, I, that's just judging from the number.
Excuse me, similar legislative contingency, as I said the other night, it's a prerogative of the executive branch to use those powers and anyway to keep on.
Okay, I wanted that clarification, so it's not, it's not.
And if I can't say it, because the city has done a wonderful job, so has Delta as well. They have brought millions of dollars to the city. This was the administration that actually brought Penn Strategies on.
True.
But ultimately, it's up to the executive branch if they want to continue that type of relationship.
Ms. Mealy?
Just to be clear, it's in the legislative branch's coffers, but we're expecting it to be expended by the executive branch? Correct? Okay. And, and my understanding was that we have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that line item and that a chunk of it substantially larger than the hundred thousand, than the seventy-five thousand dollars that would leave after building in the contract for a consultant is reserved for potential legislative needs related to the two upcoming contract negotiations we have this year. Is that accurate?
Actually, that's incorrect. In regards to the fire department, Mr. Nichols, anybody to talk about that?
I mean, in terms of, well, I don't really want to, there's active negotiations with the fire department and we're hoping that something can be brought forward here soon.
But perhaps we generally speaking in contract negotiation, you expect a building with much larger legislative contingency.
Correct, if you have an arbitration, that can cost you anywhere between fifteen and seventy-five thousand dollars if you have to, you know. I mean, worst-case scenario, you have a fire department and a police department because their contract is up next year, so.
So we're looking at the potential cost of a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that line item for arbitration related to two union contracts. I mean, we understand that may or may not happen, but that's precisely why those dollars are called contingency, correct? Because we hold them in place in case. We don't say, put them in there and then say, okay, we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on January first to hire a consultant. to hire a consultant. Then definitely seventy-five grand in there just in case we happen to need a hundred and fifty for union negotiations. Would that be accurate?
That's either yes or no, right? I would say yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm just on this number here, trying to make it real clear and simple. There's not a hundred thousand dollars in that line item to spend on a contract with the consultant beginning in, beginning in January. There's a hundred thousand dollars in that line item to spend at the end of, of, of twenty twenty on a consultant, if that remains. Okay? I need that to be absolutely crystal clear to everyone who may have had a hidden issue.
You have those options, yes, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Simple math, isn't it? Mr. Henderson?
So, so that the process would be that the, the incoming administration has a prerogative to use or not use any of these line items. So we, we put them there, and that doesn't change the prerogative of the administration, the use or not use them. But if it's not there, then he can't use it from that line item, but could use it from another line item if council transferred it.
Yeah.
Just wanted to, I mean, that's the process.
And, and I find that, once again, as I said the other night, the mayor-elect has the ability to open up this budget if he's not happy with the current mayor's budget, and make recommendations to the new city council to make those changes as much as he wants to. Has that legal ability. So this isn't a finished budget.
I understand.
It's not a finished budget until you make your alterations as well.
Yeah, I understand. My, my original question was that this is the proposal of the current administration.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Palizic?
I've had a quick question. Forgive me for asking, because I'm new to all this. It was just popped into my head since you were talking about contracted firms that do work for the city. Over the time that I've been coming to council meetings and observing and seeing what's happening, I have seen Penn Strategies present numerous times on what's going on with the city, with what's, what's happening, with what's being done. Does the other contracted firms for the city also come and present to city council on what they're doing? I hear the name Delta. Do they also come?
Yeah. Yeah. We've dealt with them in a lot of committee meetings, and especially on the East Third Street Gateway project, they were instrumental in a lot of that funding. Yeah, it's a huge project, and basically everything.
But they don't come to us. They don't sit here and, and show us what they're doing. We hear from Mr. Nichols or whoever's on the committee. Well, we don't hear from Delta, at least.
I did. I mean, we had, uh-
You're with the O C.
No, Leroy, Leroy's been here. Remember, when we did the, developed the contracts for, you know, the project, he went over the, remember that spreadsheet, the financing plan, and then they also come to finance committee more often, but-
Yearly, on a yearly basis. Typically, on a yearly basis, they come and they give us a update.
They would be, I'm sure they'd be glad to come as much as you would want them to be here.
Yeah. They, they, more than two, at least three times on committee.
They're doing a great job. Now, that's, that's not the point. Sometimes I think you want to hear from the company itself.
Well, that was the point. They've been here at least three times this, uh-
Four or five years. We spoke to them a lot in the E R C. I might be right. I think it just depends on the project that they're working on specifically.
Exactly, that's right.
Yes. I would also mention, just for clarification, that the city is under contract with Penn Strategies and currently have the RVT, which is an arm of the city that's under contract with Delta Development. So it's possible that the recording requirement, the reporting requirements vary a little bit depending on exactly who holds the contract.
Well, the other thing, we have a project team, when, you know, like I'm in college, and all the partners on East Third Street, and they come up every month for that, that meeting as well, so, you know, it's, whatever the preference of the council administration is, I'm sure they'd be glad to, I can't answer for them, but I think they'd be glad to.
I think the difference is Delta isn't local. They come up for the committee meeting and share the information, and then that's shared at the council meeting, but not being local. If we would bring them up, it'd be extra added cost. Penn Strategies is local, so they're here quite often, and it's just easier to access them. Are we done on that? Okay, let's go to the report.
For page thirty-four, finance and purchasing, personnel services, salaries, FICA, life insurance, pensions, and health insurance for a subtotal of seventy-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars. Under purchase of services, we have our commercial insurance policies, subscription and dues, and tax office expense for a subtotal of four hundred seventy-six thousand. Under supplies and materials, there are general office supplies and printing supplies for a subtotal of nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. And under equipment repairs, which includes office equipment, service contracts and rentals, and contract services, there's a subtotal of sixty-seven thousand, one twenty-five. And then closing it out on the next page, under debt service, you have short-term interest with a total of fifteen thousand for a total department expense of six hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars.
Questions? Mr. Henderson?
Looking at the office equipment, quarter three, we have spent forty-nine dollars. So in the last three months, we've spent fifteen thousand in equipment. Is that, I mean, the actual estimated for the, for the year is fifteen thousand, whereas in the third quarter, it was only forty-nine?
That's money that's being set aside to upgrade our financial system and improvements or additions of a H R system. We've been setting money aside. There eventually will be an annual cost, we believe. We've been trying to work out details with the provider that we're intending to utilize to try to offset or minimize those annual fees. You know, it was mentioned earlier, the school and cost, but get them down as low as possible, and then that's what this number will continue. But right now, we're building a pot of money, a pot of dollars to fund the initial purchase of the program, and then continue this fifteen thousand dollars to add on or maintain that program.
So how much is in that pot right now? Do we know?
Uh, there's a few years of fifteen, and I believe the first year was at fifty, so I'm guessing probably around sixty. I can get an accurate number, but we assign that each year through the audit process, so that we're not losing that money, similar to what we do with streets and the levy project.
And then can you explain to me why our pension goes down there?
In two thousand nineteen, it was budgeted with two full-time positions. I believe that we moved one of the positions from a in-house salary down to the contract services. However, the pensions were adjusted last year. The full pension number for the only plan is allocated amongst forty, fifty, sixty people, so to go through and allocate every specific budget, we just decided to leave it in there and not worry about that small allocation for the twenty nineteen year.
So those numbers aren't necessarily tied to that department, is what you're saying?
We try to get it as close as possible, but with the, the shift in positions, the overall change that would have been necessary to make that would affect every specific department. So we felt that it was just, we, we decided to leave it specifically there rather than changing each individual department by swarming.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fosnot?
Make sure to sleep.
I'm sorry?
Insurance for our sleep, for our vehicles.
That's, they have one consolidated policy, so it's all commercial policies currently. Our liability, employees, office employees, all the policies were consolidated. One group provided to that. Sleep was separate.
Thank you.
Other questions? There's none there. We'll go to page thirty-six.
For the Department of Human Resources, for Personnel Services, with salaries, FICA, life insurance, workers' comp, pensions, and health insurance, a subtotal of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. For purchase of services, which include office supplies, advertising, medical exams, training, and professional services, there's a subtotal of six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for a total apartment expense of one hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Questions on page thirty-six?
Go ahead. I didn't get to make my annual statement on page thirty-five.
Oh, okay.
And this is my last time to do it.
Statements on page-
So, you know, what am I saying if I didn't, if I didn't say something? But we, we'll, we'll pay five thousand in interest. We have an estimated fifteen thousand if we were to use it all. But this is for the, the two million that we have in the-
Tax anticipation.
Right, tax anticipation. Thank you. So just a question on it, though. The estimated ending balance that's unassigned that we have on the first page, that's just a budget number? The two million, six hundred thousand?
The two million, five eighty-two, three nineteen?
Uh, yes.
That number comes, that's an actual number which comes from the twenty, twenty-eighteen audit. It's our starting point or the ending now for twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen.
So if, if, I can show you, I think I have that on the down there. I can show you the timeline of that number, if you'd like after.
That's, I, I just wondered how that corresponds with the two million that we borrow every year, but that's not really there.
The two million that we borrow, we borrow it during the year, and it has to be paid off before the end of the year, so it's not, you're, you see the ending now. It washes itself through the budget.
Right, right.
So.
But the reason that we borrow every year is because we just don't have enough.
Cash on hand at the beginning.
We need cash on hand, because we spend it down every year. So that's, you know, if we could, if we could hold something in the bank, then we could save that, at least that five thousand interest every year, which would be used in, I think, some other powerful ways. Just throwing it out there like I do every year. So thanks for letting me do that.
What is it? What is it better for? Thank you. So there's no more questions on the budget tonight. So there you have it. We have a budget as read. We've gone through it, and no tax increase budget as it stands. We've taken some interesting discussions in the past, two budget sessions, a lot of questions and decisions we have to make tomorrow evening. So that'll be our first reading of the ordinance. So put your thinking caps on and come with your ideas. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting is tomorrow night, Thursday, December fifth, twenty nineteen. This meeting is our regular time, at seven thirty P M. City Council Chambers. Upcoming meetings, Monday, December ninth, twelve P M, Planning Commission, four P M, Rec Commission, one P M, Finance Committee, two thirty P M, Public Works, three thirty P M, Public Safety. Wednesday, December eleventh, eleven thirty A M, Redevelopment Authority. And our final council meeting of the year will be a week from tomorrow night, December twelfth, twenty nineteen, and we will close out the year that night, hopefully. Any comments or questions from council tonight? From the administration? From the public? I entertain a motion for adjournment? All in favor?